You ready, Melinda? You ready, Jeff? Okay. Notice is hereby given of Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 5:00 PM on Monday, November 2nd, 2015, at Friendswood City Hall Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, regarding the items of business according to the agenda list to be low. Call the meeting to order. We're going to have the invocation by Pastor Ralph Horbrash with Hope Lutheran Church. And then if you all will please stay standing, we'll do the pledge of allegiance to the United States and Texas.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, it is by your mercy and grace that we live and move and have our being. We rejoice that we are able to live in a country where we can assemble freely. Thank you for the gift of government that goes about making our lives better. We ask your blessing upon this council meeting this evening, and we ask your special blessing upon residents of Friendswood who have suffered some destruction over this past weekend. May we be the hand that reaches out to serve them as well. Father, we ask these things boldly because we come in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item four, communication from the public to comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act. The city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen's comment period. Brett Banfield?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. As you just stated, I'm Brett Banfield, and I'm here to represent the Friendswood Downtown Association, speaking on workshop item, Agenda Item 5C, in regards to the permitted use table and design criteria manual. As you all want to know, the development and redevelopment downtown area is quickly coming to what I like to call a significant crossroads moment for us, for our community. Much of the undesirable buildings are now gone. The old pawn shop, many of the old gas stations, car wash, and many of the other older rundown buildings have been removed. At this moment, we have, as one PZ member so eloquently put, we have kind of a clean palette right now to kind of a fresh start to recreate the downtown that, one, is identifiable, that you can tell it's a downtown, and, two, that's a desirable destination, not only for our visitors, but also for our own citizens. To achieve this, we need to establish a special criteria for the special location. And that will help attract the right kind of businesses, create the atmosphere to entice nice restaurants, one-of-a-kind shops, mom-and-pop businesses. Now, I know establishing new requirements can be tough, and even on down the road, defending those new requirements is even tougher. It can be, but that's what it takes to create a wonderful, charming downtown, a downtown that truly represents Friendswood, a downtown that we can be proud of. It's been said many times, well, just let free market take care of it. And that's true. Free market will take care of downtown. But you've got to be careful there. There's nothing wrong with leading free market or guiding free market. That's okay to do that. Many cities in our state already do that. That's why Fredericksburg's like Fredericksburg, or Grapevine, or Flower Mountain, or Georgetown. Those towns didn't come out that beautiful because of free market. It's because the city leaders set the guidelines for that special area. Now, we're not talking about all of Friendswood. We're talking about just downtown Friendswood. It's also been said, no, Tom Boss going through the same thing, and they've done remarkable changes there. And one thing I took away, we attended a convention there, and the early city leader said, when you're trying to revitalize an area, what's most important is private investment will follow public investment. Those entrepreneurs and those businesswomen and men need to see that the city's taking their downtown seriously, and then they will follow with the free market. I want to share two quick stories real quick, how we experienced this. You know, we built a property in Alvin back in 2010. And as you all know, Alvin does not have zoning, and it shows. Those city leaders are desperately trying to beautify their city. They can't do it through zoning. They're doing it through ordinances. We went in to build a property there, and they said, fine, you can build your property, but by the way, it has to be 80% brick. And here's the brick colors you can choose. The paint, the 20% you're going to paint, here's the paint palette you get to choose from. And by the way, your roof has to be this color, and your landscaping has to look like this. They went down a whole list of reasons how we were going to build our property. And this is a property we owned for 40 years. We were okay with that. We knew what they were trying to do. They're trying to beautify their city. So it's okay for the city leaders to say, look, we're trying to fix up our town. Welcome to our community. You can do business here, but here's the rules you've got to follow. People have asked me, why am I so passionate about the downtown area? And I've told the story before, and I'm going to do a much abbreviated version of this. 15 years ago, we tried to refinance one of our properties in downtown area, the Honey Woods property. We came this close to losing our loan because the lender came in, looked at our property, looked at the downtown area, and he quite frankly says, I'm not going to do this loan. Friendswood's a low, looks like a low-income area, and I'm not going to give you the loan. That was a shock to us. We had to show the lender the other areas of Friendswood and say, this is not Friendswood. It's not what our city looks like. He gave us the loan, but that story, that moment's always stuck with us. It was an embarrassing moment for us, not only as a business owner, but as a person who's lived for 47 years. Someone come in your hometown and say, you've got an ugly downtown. So that's always stuck with us, and that's why myself and many others are so passionate about fixing up our downtown. And I wanted to mention one more thing real quick. You're going to get the backing on this. I know it's tough making these criterias. I know it's tough defending them, but you will have the support of the citizens. The association that we started back in June has grown from an eight-member steering committee to up to over 125 members right now, all the way to 150, eventually 200 and 500 members. We have over 2,000 followers on Facebook now, very broad-based support. We've got people from P&amp;Z, Keep Friendswood Beautiful, the school board, business owners, property owners, citizens. Everyone wants their downtown fixed up, and you're going to get the support. So I encourage you to take a hard look at the new design criteria and the new requirements, and I will be here to answer any questions during the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Jerry?
Thank you. I'm a longtime Friendswood resident. I've spent nine years on city council. Many of you may also know that I have a military background. And I learned from that that in any organization, the further up you are, the farther out you must look and plan. And I worked for a general who said that when you're at the top, you have to set the tone for that organization. Friendswood is not a rich city, but there are a lot of well-to-do people that live here. Everyone who comes wants to close the gate behind them, but that doesn't work. People keep coming, and the population grows, and the cost of running the city continues to rise. Some people buy expensive homes and pay taxes that, on average, cover the cost of their services. Others, few maybe, even buy very expensive homes, which helps cover other people. But most cities rely on commercial to keep up with the cost of services in a city. The accepted ratio is 73% residential and 27% commercial. But about 15 years ago, Friendswood decided that without too much paying, we could strive for 80% residential and 20% commercial. If that cut back, we could still get by. But we're even falling behind that. And we're surviving on the delta of the new growth and the lagging expenses of those people coming here. Some people have told me, especially when I was on city council, that they didn't care. They could afford the higher taxes. But what happens is, is the property taxes go up, it gets harder to sell your house. Some people can't afford it, won't buy your house. The property values start going down, and you enter a death spiral. A lot of cities annex more land and try again and give it a little harder shot on their second chance, but Friendswood doesn't have that opportunity. We're landlocked. We don't have that safety valve. So leadership of any organization, especially this city, must look out long-term and plan for the future viability, especially after build-out, when the growth virtually stops and that delta that we're surviving on stops. What vitality do we have left? We need to develop what we have to the best that we can, which requires time, energy, and money. Our downtown needs to visually reflect and show to all the pride we have in our city and attract people and businesses to our downtown. Many of us should work together to set the tone and identify and take the steps to add liveliness as well as visual and economic vitality to our downtown, eliminating certain permitted uses, encouraging others, and grandfathering graciously existing businesses that are there. That will help our downtown be what we need and what we want it to be.
Thank you, Jerry. Mayor Whitaker?
Mayor Holland, council members, and members of P&amp;Z, thank you for letting me talk this evening. I know I made a mistake when I agreed to talk after Brett and Jerry. They've said everything that needs to be said, basically. I was here a couple of months ago, and I talked to you about not cutting the tax rate so significantly, but saving some funds for future projects next year and potentially having some money to invest in the downtown area. And I want to thank you for your consideration in that area. When I was here a couple of months ago, I mentioned to you that the community appreciates the work and the effort that you've done and the major investment that you've made in the downtown area. You have completed the major portion of the comprehensive drainage plan downtown. And that not only eliminates the need for detention ponds downtown, but it also allows for greater utilization of the land of those lots downtown. And it, you know, we had a recession just after that project was completed, so consequently, we were slow to capitalize on new growth downtown. But we're now beginning to see the benefits of that investment. So that was a big step. You've also, I think, waived development fees and impact fees to help businesses when they want to start up financially. It helps them financially. And you have reduced regulatory requirements so that people can have greater use of their land, and also allowed greater height, vertical construction, which allows for increased utilization of the land, which is a benefit to the developer. And you have continued to support the Keep Friendswood Beautiful Committee in their efforts to maintain and improve the medians, not only in the downtown area, but in our entryways as well. And I'm telling you what, they do a great job. Coming into our city looks particularly, from the 2351 area, very beautiful. And you currently have plans to install pavers at Stevenson Park here at City Hall and at the library. So you've made a tremendous investment, and you're continuing to make investments. And many other things that you've done. You've streamlined the development process, and it makes it much easier for developers to go through the process. And I've heard many developers say that the city is much easier to work with now, and they're easier, they're more able to work through the process at a much faster pace, an easier pace. So you've done a lot to improve the city downtown. You made a great investment. I'm here this evening to talk like Brett and Jerry, specifically on Agenda Item, in your work session, Agenda Item C, the permitted use table for the downtown area. And I'm here to specifically ask that you eliminate certain businesses from that permitted use table from the downtown area, such as gas stations, automobile repair businesses, equipment rentals, auto washes, storage units, and large warehouses. There are a minimum number of these businesses in town right now. And so consequently, and those people, those businesses would be grandfathered, so they're not affected. And so while we have a clean slate, right now is the time for us to act on this. It's a very appropriate time for us to act on this. With the investment that the community has made in the downtown area, you know, like Brett said, you certainly have the right to create some criteria and some restrictions in that area. And you know, we're not unique in this. There's cities in our area here. There's cities across the state of Texas. There are cities across our nation. I've lived in various areas of the United States, and this is nothing new to the Friendswood area. And so, and what these other cities have done, it's been highly successful. They've increased values downtown, and it's like a magnet. It attracts new businesses. So I'm encouraging you to take a look at the criteria manual this evening, and perhaps also to, you know, some businesses like chain-type businesses, fast food restaurants, and so Ask them and change their criteria manual so that those businesses are required to conform to a more traditional type of architecture rather than, you know, the big gaudy boxes and so forth that you see. It works in all other areas, and it'll work here. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, you want to give us an update on capital projects?
Good evening, council. Like we, like I'm, we're trying to do, we're trying to give both you as council and those watching at home and anybody in the audience a more visual of what our capital projects are doing. So I'll continue with that. And if you have any questions, as I go through the capital projects update, please feel free to stop me and ask any and all questions as needed. As we get started, we'll talk with the library. The library expansion is continuing. As you can see here, they're pouring the grade beams. This is from a drone on the side closest to, actually, this is the side, the side of the library. Boy, this is Mr. Busby. I could be wrong on the attorney. That's his property, and that's our fence up against, on the property line, as they're going in with the grade beams. This is the front of the library as they poured the top slab. And this is part of the interior that they're remodeling. This area right here, typically, if you were to go into Ms. Mary's library, you would go in there and have a meeting. Right now, not so much, but in the near future, again, we'll be having meetings in that same room as they liven the place up. The next project I wanted to speak on is the fire stations. Yes, sir.
Before you move on, what are we looking for?
A lot of their stuff, once they dry in, it goes a lot faster, and they are starting to work inside. The parking lot that they've poured, everything is tied in. And, you know, funny enough, when I drafted the original AI, we'd already had one really good rain, and since then, we've had another really good rain. So definitely flows in and out of the parking lot. But we are still looking at a springtime, springtime grand opening. The fire stations, specifically the fire station behind the Public Safety Building, this and the other fire station, number four there at Liddon, they are, they have sent the advertisement to the Friendswood Journal. So if you grab this week's copy, you'll see that our construction manager at risk, Duratek, is seeking bids for work for that particular, for these particular projects. Bids are due on the 19th. Just as a general note, because it's a construction manager at risk, that's why they're going out for bids as compared to typically, it's something the city, the city goes out for bids. Additionally, we have reached out to the homeowners of the Friendswood Lake subdivision, the HOA. We have a meeting planned with them on November 10th. I believe to this point, we've answered some of the questions, actually, all the questions that I know of, that have been brought to us and that has been disseminated amongst the homeowners out there. I think it'll be a good informational piece for the homeowners association. Yes, sir.
Did they go out for bids in places other than the Friendswood Journal?
No, sir, they did not, because a lot of what they do is they'll go to the AGCs, and they get a lot, they do a lot of their business.
What is AGC?
The Associated General Contractors. I mean, that was one thing that we discussed. We talked about, you know, if you wanted to go into the Houston Chronicle or some other local paper, going through the Friendswood Journal meets all of the state's criteria within a local, within a local paper. Most of theirs, they're going to specific trades. As for the electrical work, as far as the, as far as the site work, so they're going to the AG, the Associated General Contractors, the, and there's a couple of other plan rooms where they go.
They are advertising it to them?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And those five or six other agencies definitely have plans, and they have all the specifications. So yes, sir, they do, are going out for multiple locations. These are, these are the renderings, and this is Fire Station 4. Lake Friendswood, we're actually meeting tomorrow with the architect to go over more site-specific processes for out there, and specifically what we're, what our goals we're wanting to have out there for amenities-wise. The plan is to have the plans finished by the end of the calendar year. I think where we're at, where we are in a position where we can get the bids, the plans finished, and then advertising in February, in January, February. I know that there was a meeting that was planned out in, out in the field, and it was raining pretty good a couple Saturdays ago. I know James Tony, our Parks and Recreation Department Director, and I believe Mayor Protem Hill, got to enjoy a very rain-filled tour.
Wasn't that rainy?
Wasn't that rainy?
It was a good tour.
Good. Good.
Chairman O'Farrell was there, too.
Okay. The next project I want to speak on is our sports park. These shots were obviously taken before all the rain started, but our dirt contractor tandem has done a good job at creating the infills. The reason we see the outline right here for each one of the infills is that's where it's, that's where it's sunken. So the contractor ends up coming in and bringing in red clay, mixes it with a conditioner, and that's where your infills, infills are going to be. These sections outside of here, that's either going to be a grassy area or sidewalks. Where we see what looks like a, you know, a T, this is where your dugouts are, and this right here is the pathway from the concession stand area, where there'll be sidewalks that get you to that point. Now, depending upon where you're at and where you're going, there will be a sidewalk that goes from this, from this concession field. If you wanted to walk over to the existing fields, there will be sidewalks that go there and connect to the proposed parking lot. We're hoping to start putting some grass down there, getting the irrigation system being placed out there in the coming month. Couple other closer shots. One of the things that previous shot didn't show is the lighting for out there. Musco has been out there and has constructed the light poles. In fact, if I can get some help from Ms. Wanda, we'll show you how that actually goes.
The existing fields, these are the ones over the sign. It looks like they're towards Bart's house. Okay. They're gonna tear down. Let's go. That's what I thought. Five.
Starting to think that working for the city is a side gig, and he does that for real. Now, the high standards we've set for the last two months, I hope you don't hold this going into the future, but, you know, we do plan on having additional videos. The video for this coming month, on the 16th of November, we should get our first building from Public Restroom Corporation. On the 18th, tentatively, is when they'll be taking that building and placing it on its final resting place on the slab that will be placed at the, it'll be in the area of the proposed fields, not in the existing fields. Existing fields, we should be getting the building for that the first part of December. And this is one of the existing, one of the proposed buildings. This, for many of us, will be the only view that we ever have of the ladies' room. Stevenson Park Bridge. Yes, sir.
Just talking about schedule on that. I can work off this real quick.
Yes, sir.
We've had a few rainouts, and it's obvious you guys got a lot of work done. You got, you stayed steady on it up until you started getting washed out.
Yes.
How are we looking schedule-wise right now? I missed the meeting Thursday.
What you missed from Thursday is...
My action item was to get you the information on the scoreboard.
And you did, and you did get me the information regarding the power for scoreboards. So we will be, we will be proceeding with that. From a timetable, you know, the month of November, we do hope we get a little bit more dry weather.
This weekend, I think they're calling.
This weekend, we are anticipating getting more, getting more rain. If we continue to get a lot of rain like we're getting, it will negatively impact the progress of it, specifically the installation of the irrigation system and the placement of grass. To date, where we're kind of looking at from a topsoil perspective, we did have topsoil that was on there. The heavy rains that we did receive, we did have some of it slough off a little bit. What we're specifically looking at is the grade and the slope of grade. If we are slightly lower than what the projected elevation was, I think we'll be okay, provided we have the slope. So we're working with the contractor to have the slope maintained, provided the slopes main, well, the slope will be maintained. Once we go down with the grass, all that will be...
You were at final grade, I think, before the storm hit.
Yes, sir. We were perfect on grade.
So how did you, was it a big hit, or?
I want to say it's, I don't want to say compressed, but when you have...
Uh, I wanna say it's, uh, I don't wanna say compressed, but when you have dirt that's not com, that's not compacted in-
Oh, right, yeah, yeah.
It's going to settle some, and I wanna say it's settled roughly, um, two inches.
Okay, but how about wash off?
Wash off, we did have some, but, but not a, not a great amount. No, sir. And for us, for the people out and, out there listening about stormwater, we do have our SW three feet fences around there, so all the dirt's being contained on site.
And everything drained pretty well?
Everything drained pretty good.
Uh, the other question I guess I have, uh, is, um, what date do we, what's the date we've committed to the, uh, user for having the fields, uh, available to them for spring season?
I'll be honest, I'm not exactly sure what date we, we've said. I know that we're aiming for, um, sorry. We are aiming to be done in February. Typically, I wanna say, and in conversations with Michael Boyett, they've wanted to get started in January for getting ready for, for spring ball.
The, the, the existing field would still be available for them?
Existing fields, yes, sir, would still be available.
All right, well, just keep working closely with them. Thanks. Thank you, Patrick.
Stevenson Park Bridge. Uh, we went before the Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District's meeting this past Tuesday, and we did receive the variance for the increase, the slight increase. And I, by slight, I mean point oh seven feet increase or rise based on the development of the bridge. Um, for just general terms, we're talking about point eight four inches. So, less, less than this. Um, we did receive the variance, the, uh, the plans, the full construction plans for both the bridge and the walkways will be on the agenda for the November 10th meeting. Um, from a perspective for the bridge and actual installation of the bridge, um, we've, we've discussed it with, with council, and the methodology that we plan on doing is going out for bids through a request for proposal. Um, when we do that, we will be requesting proposals from contractors to, um, erect the bridge and the, and the abutments for that one sole section of it. Uh, once, once we complete that, or probably before we complete that, we'll be also be going out for bids for the actual trail itself. So when I, yes, sir.
November 10th meeting.
November 10th meeting is with the Galveston, Galveston County Consolidation. The, by then, we will be pretty, I believe we're gonna start advertising on the 12th, and that's more a matter of just having, if you advertise on the 5th, you needed to have submitted everything to the Friendswood Journal by noon today. We do not have that request for proposal done. We should have it done by the 5th, so it will have it to, um, Ms. Melinda's office so that it can be sent to the Friendswood Journal with the idea that we advertise on the 12th and the 19th, and we'll accept bids on the 8th of December. Theoretically, you could get it a little bit sooner, but then you're having people bid over the Thanksgiving holiday, and my experience has always been that you don't get as good of bids as you could when you make them do it over a holiday, and lately, we haven't been getting great bids anyway. We need to do everything we can to get as good a bid as we can.
Yes, sir. Are you going to bring it to council in December, or is it?
We do not plan to bring it to council in December. We do plan on bringing it to council in, in January. So our January 4th meeting, it will be on there, provided everything works out. Whispering Pines, and although I didn't necessarily have a slide for it, um, one of the things that has gone on since our last meeting is we did accept bids for the, uh, round one street improvements. Um, we are evaluating the bids. The contractor, who is the apparent low bidder, is someone we haven't necessarily worked with as a prime, and from a general perspective, they haven't done a project as large as what their low bid was. Now, the positive to them is they have done a lot of smaller projects, and if you look at the round one street improvements, one could say it's actually four small, four small projects combined in one bid package. So base, going along those, they have done projects as much as any one of the individual streets were done. Um, but just from a general perspective, the head of the company was going out of town. I did not have a chance to sit down and meet with him to make sure from a traffic control perspective they're able to handle everything and do everything that, um, you and our citizens expect from a contractor in, in the city.
Patrick, is this the, uh, round one street improvement you're talking about?
Round ones, round one street improvements. Yes, sir. So I anticipate at the, uh, December meeting, having an agenda item for the round one street improvements. On Whispering Pines, this is where they were up to about two weeks ago. They have, have since opened up, as you can see right here, there are barricades on Deepwood. Those barricades have since been opened up. They've done, um, one more pour for a second lane going in this direction. They have done an additional pour for one lane in this direction. This is in front of Timberfield Estates. And where they're at at this point, they're, I wanna say they've done the curb, but I could be wrong on that. I know that they're taking the form wards off. Um, they are, they're, they are moving as best they can on that particular project. Um, fairly soon, they will be in front of the Aubrey intersection with West, with Whispering Pines, and we'll be pouring that as well as they move towards swip, flopping over and going to the other side of the street, and we can get off the asphalt and drive on the, the new concrete. Our water plants, two and seven. Um, at a previous council, last council, we talked about some issues that we had with this particular slab itself. Um, the contractor paid for some borings and some additional testing from an expert, expert out of, out of Austin. The, the test came back good. We met with the contractor, we talked about exactly how everything needed to go. They did everything that, that was expected and asked of them or requested of them. The one thing that they have not done at this point is provide an updated, um, completion schedule on the project. Um, this is, this is number two, this is number seven. Um, both projects are behind from a time perspective, and we are pushing them to get a, uh, construction schedule. The, uh, the last item, and I don't have a slide, is our Black Ball, Black Hawk wastewater treatment facility. Um, we still, Marad and I met with the City of Houston this past week, and we've had discussions with Bay Brook Mud One regarding the supplemental agreement on that, and both, both supplemental agreements are, we're having continued discussions. Are there any other questions regarding capital projects or public works in general?
Councilmember Enoch.
Patrick, where are we on the Dog Park? I know we talked about 1776, we talked about Old City Park. Where, where have we landed on that?
Um, from the Dog Park, uh, to be honest, we haven't necessarily focused as much efforts on there. Um, from a monetary standpoint, a lot of our monetary things are already in play. As far as construction, we were looking at the, the phase three of the, of the seven-year bond. So what we're trying to do is, is get where we need to be and work on the projects that we have going, i.e. the Stevenson Park Bridge, the Lake Friendswood, and once we get, I want, I don't wanna say a lull, but in essence, that's what that is, we can focus a little bit more on the Old City Park and the, and the Dog Park as, aspect.
Just another word related to that. We'll be coming back to y'all to have a discussion about the positioning of the Dog Park, the plans for, uh, Old City Park Arena, et cetera. As you recall, that discussion about the use of that area. So we've got some work to be done there with you all. And let me commend Patrick, Public Works, uh, Parks, and Marad and all those careers. There, there's a lot of, um, extraordinary work going on, on these projects. Uh, because of cost constraints and because of contractors' bids, um, our staff is taking on a lot of work that, uh, normally they're not called to do, and I really wanna thank them publicly for that.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We keep Friendswood Beautiful and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. James Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'd like to begin to hopefully have a work session with you in regards to the possible, uh, joining of the Parks Board and Keep Friendswood Beautiful Committee. Uh, the reason for the, uh, the merger is simply, uh, for us to create a better city, better parks, better facilities, and, uh, just last week, the two groups were able to workshop together amongst themselves, and there is a consensus, unified consensus among the group, uh, that they would like to, uh, merge together to better serve the community. Uh, we have members from both those groups here today. A few guys would mind standing and saying hello. We have Kate Corey, uh, KFB. We have, uh, Paul Marks, KFB. Uh, we also have Todd Mendenhall, KFB, and from the Parks Board, we have Tom Goodwin and, uh, David Montz.
Thank y'all for being here. So as well as for everything you guys do. Thank you.
Uh, later in the agenda tonight, there will be an item for consideration by council to, uh, merge those two groups together and appoint, uh, several members to, uh, Keep Friendswood Beautiful. At this time, I'd like to open it up for any questions that you guys may have for us. Uh, we also have, um, from your backup information, you noticed that there was, um, changing some of the bylaws between Keep Friendswood Beautiful to help, uh, make for a smooth transition. We're gonna create, uh, six subcommittees, and of one of those subcommittees will be a Parks Subcommittee. So I have, uh, those draft items for you, for you to take a look at.
Councilmember Hill?
Hey, James, how many people will that board be comprised of?
Uh, currently, right now, uh, Keep Friendswood Beautiful has the, the approval from council to have nineteen members. And currently, they have about twelve, and so adding, uh, three, four of the Parks Board members as permanent members, and then the other, uh, Parks Board members will be considered volunteers. So if you, like I said, if you take a look at the handout that you received, uh, inside there, there's gonna be the Parks Subcommittee Group, and, uh, Tom Goodwin, who is the Chair of the Parks Committee, will actually chair this, uh, Parks Subcommittee. And, uh, that group will, uh, actually meet and discuss items specifically to Parks, and then, uh, those recommendations, decisions, uh, will be brought back to the entire KFB, uh, group as a whole, uh, for consideration, discussion, and, and action.
Getting nineteen people to agree.
It's easy for that group.
Okay. Councilmember Rocky, I'm sorry.
Are all the people that are still on the Parks Board gonna, are all of them moving over to be on KFB, or just some of them?
Just some of them at this point, uh, have actually committed to be Parks Board members. I'm, I'm sorry, Keep Friendswood Beautiful members. Uh, that is also in the packet for, uh, later on for you guys to, uh, appoint. The other members of the Parks Board would like to be considered volunteer members. Then that means they would just come to different events that we have and participate in and be a volunteer service to the community.
The, uh, one more question. Uh, the, the role that the Parks Committee used to have, uh, part of it was advisory for the youth sports. Will that just roll in on this as well, and, and they'll keep that?
No, sir. There will be no, uh, there will be no discussion of any youth sports, uh, issues. Uh, all of that will be handled between staff, and also, we're gonna create a youth sports group, which will comprise of members from each of the organizations. So it would be a president and a designee from that organization will meet with staff, uh, maybe about six times a year to discuss issues specifically geared to youth sports.
Terrific, thank you.
That's great. Councilmember Enoch.
James, can you talk to us a little bit? I know you, it's obvious you put a lot of time, effort, and thought into this, but you, we're just getting hit with it, so we don't have a lot of the background. Can you give us a little bit of why we're doing this, what do you, what we hope to accomplish, why we think it's gonna be beneficial? Was there a precipitous that brought about this change, or a trigger that we said, you know, this is the right thing to do, and didn't, where do we get, did we get this model from somewhere else, or? Kind of walk through the committees, if you wouldn't mind, so we understand what we're trying to accomplish here with each of the committees.
Well, basically, it provides for a unified group. Uh, it gives, uh, the Keep Friendswood Beautiful Group, uh, more of a basis to, uh, apply for various grants. Uh, as you know, they were successful in receiving a grant from, uh, from, uh, Keep Texas Beautiful. Uh, this will allow them to be able to branch out into other areas and, uh, better be able to provide the citizens of Friendswood what, uh, a more unified a group and approach. As you know, Keep Friendswood Beautiful also does, uh, some of the upkeep and maintenance of Stevenson Park, so it's just a natural fit for the two groups to be together and to combine their resources and efforts and, and be, be a one, like I said, unified, uh, group.
Are there any other? To your question?
He wanted, he might just turn the committees, he might step into each of the committees.
Sure. Uh, the first subcommittee that you have is, uh, gonna be an executive committee, and there's gonna be a committee chairperson for that. It's gonna be, uh, Sherry Goins, who's actually the chairperson for the actual Keep Friendswood Beautiful Committee. There's gonna be a co-chair, and then there's several committee members. Uh, remember, this is in draft form. It's been discussed with the, uh, Parks Board and the, uh, Keep Friendswood Beautiful Group, and they're actually still modifying this and making changes as we go, but this is kind of the initial stab, uh, stab at it. Uh, the objective is to review and oversee KFB goals, funding opportunities, board governance and structure, documentations, reporting, partnerships, new board members, volunteers, and strategic planning. And then there's a list of responsibilities that each sub, uh, that the subcommittee will be responsible for. Right now, there's a, uh, an actual signup sheet that's going around, uh, from, uh, around the committee to get volunteers and get those individuals who'd be interested in, uh, participating and working in this actual committee here. And then, uh, the next one is an education committee, and that will be chaired by, uh, Patty Steinke, Patricia Steinke, and obviously, the objective, as you can see, is to partner with FISD, Friendswood Residents and Volunteers by educating and, and raising awareness regarding litter, waste, handling practices, recycling, uh, and, and so forth. And then there's a list of responsibilities.
Is she a teacher, Patty?
She is. Yes, sir. And then these are the several events that'll be held under this particular subcommittee will be responsible for the, uh, annual conference, rain barrel workshops, figgy appearances, recycling bowl, and volunteer training program. And so it just goes on and on. Again, there's a list going around for individuals to sign up to be a part of the various subcommittees. Uh, the next one we have is the Environmental Action Committee, and that committee will be chaired by Paul Marks. Uh, the objective is that is to involve the entire committee in the projects that are desec, uh, designated and educated people in changing their attitudes about the problems of littering, uh, conservation resources, and green initiatives. And then there's a list of responsibilities, and then there's several events that will be held under this committee will be Fall Hall, Spring Sparkle, Annual Little, Litter Survey, and Business Beautification Awards. Any questions so far as we go through these? Okay. And then the next one is the Beautification Committee. It'll be, uh, chaired by Kate Corey, and the objective there is to promote programs, uh, projects, actions that improve and enhance the appearance of Friendswood. Several responsibilities there, and then the events that this group will be responsible for will be the Tree Giveaway, Solar Light Program, Christmas Decorations, and National Planning Day. And then the Parks Subcommittee, we talked about that earlier in the discussion, uh, that will be chaired by Tom Goodwin, and the objective there is to promote and use of the city's parks and investigate ways to beautify and increase the usage. And then there's responsibilities, and then the events that, uh, this group will be responsible for will be sanding the park and mowing the park. And again, this is all draft, and, uh, as things, uh, as more programs are developed, we'll decide where those would fall under the subcommittee. And then our final one is Public Awareness Committee, and that'll be, I'm sorry, yes.
To the Parks Committee?
Uh-huh.
Are they gonna be focused primarily on the, uh, Stevenson Park or Ball Field?
All, all parks, yes, sir. All parks, beautification of all parks, ball fields, recommendations. They just will stay away from the youth sports, planning and programming of the youth sports.
But that's ordinarily where we get, and if I'm wrong, you know, correct me, and perhaps Councilman Scott can provide some helpful input. But the user groups are where we get a lot of the input for the things that we'd like to do or who we partner with to make a lot of the improvements at those facilities. And I suppose they're still able to participate via this particular committee. Will the committees meet privately? Will they meet publicly, like we have a public notice like we did for the, you know, the previous Parks Board?
Well, subcommittees technically don't have to, to, you know, announce their meetings because they're subcommittees, and so they can kind of meet at their leisure, and they could actually meet an hour or so before the actual Keep Friends with Beautiful meeting.
I don't, I guess I don't, you know, it's not that I have a problem with it. I just, I'm a little concerned that maybe we're losing a little sunshine on what we're doing, so.
A lot of, like, a lot of the youth sports stuff was done at the staff level anyway, so all those decisions and scheduling feels and all that was done through the actual staff. So we will still have, you know, like Tom Goodwin can still help in the institutional knowledge of some of the ways those things took place and how some of these agreements were drafted, and he could still be a part of that youth sports group meeting with staff to help resolve a lot of those issues.
So James, will there still be Keep Friends with Beautiful members, or will all members be a part of the subcommittee?
No, they're, they're still the Keep Friends with Beautiful Committee, and then they're in, under the committee, there will be these six subcommittees. So it allows them to be able to break out into these small groups and do a lot of the work that's taking place throughout the city.
And then from a staff perspective, are you going to continue to support it at the Keep Friends with Beautiful level? Or are we going to have representation supporting each subcommittee as well?
There will be staff level from the entire committee as a whole. We will also meet with the subcommittees as well, too, to provide them the continued staff support that we've done, you know, thus far. Along with the help from our council liaisons as well, we would expect, you know, the council liaison to be a part of that as well.
Councilmember Rocky?
And I think you kind of answered this, but I just want to make sure. You know, our rules for subcommittees and that they have a quorum and they provide minutes, and if they fail to meet a quorum, they can't meet, and et cetera, et cetera. Apply only to the whole Keep Friends with Beautiful general meetings. Is that correct?
Correct. That would apply to the entire.
Subcommittees will not have that. They won't have quorum rules and all that.
Correct.
Will they take notes and publish notes?
Yes. They'll take notes, and those notes will be brought back to the entire group, reporting back to the entire Keep Friends with Beautiful Committee as a whole, where the notes were taken.
Included in their.
Included in their minutes, exactly.
So that way, we'd get that information. I think that's what you were alluding to, Carl.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, so the, the subcommittees are still going to get back together with Keep Friends with Beautiful. And so any recommendations coming out of the subcommittees come back to council through Keep Friends with Beautiful. So whether the, you know, the Parks Committee or whatever subcommittee gets together, they can do no action. They bring their recommendations to Keep Friends with Beautiful. Keep Friends with Beautiful brings those recommendations to City Council. At that meeting where they bring their recommendations, it is a committee meeting, and therefore, it's governed by the same rules as they all do. So if you want to find out what the Parks Committee is doing, when they bring their ideas to Keep Friends with Beautiful, it'll be a posted meeting and meeting minutes and all that other stuff, so that'll all be taken care of. Also, I'd just like to say real quick, Parks and Rec Board, it's where I got started, you know, working up here and everything else, and the guys and women that served on that committee have done a tremendous job. And if you look at the approval of the bond election that took place, and you look at all the improvements, we just looked over several that are a direct relation of the work that they did in, as a group. I think that the, you know, now that all the parkland is being developed, certainly, we're way, way, way ahead of where we were, you know, seven, eight years ago when I was on the, on the Parks and Rec Board, that I think it's a good fit. I think that, that no, you know, it can be argued that Keep Friends with Beautiful does as good a job as anybody in the city as far as maintaining the appearance of Friendswood. And so I think by tying them in and having them partner with the Parks and Rec Board can only improve what we represent to other communities when they come to our parks and our sports youth, our youth sports facilities and everything else. So I think it's a great partnership. You know, I applaud James for talking about this. He mentioned it to me several months ago. I thought it was a great idea. I'm thankful that the Parks and Rec Board is on board with the idea, and I think this makes it a much stronger group and something that we'll all be proud of in the future.
Sure. Councilmember Rocky?
At the general, the, the, the super KF, the super committee we're now going to have, is it normal for them to have, during their meetings, to have a, an open period for the community to comment like we do at our meetings?
Yes, we do have that.
And will they continue to do that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
James, I just wanted to say thanks. I think this is a, is a, is a great rebuild, and I think you will get a lot more done, especially with these subcommittees, and needs tweaking, I know you'll take care of that, so I'm happy you did this.
Thank you.
Agreed. It's gotten a lot bigger. It's going to have a few moving parts, but my hat's off to you for going this route. We will be able to accomplish more, so thank you very much, and to the volunteers. Thank you.
Hey, real quick, real quick, though, in the, in the backup material, you'd mentioned that four Parks members were going to be recommended for appointments. The backup material shows two.
Yeah, the other two are still contemplating their decision.
So tonight, we'll recommend two.
Just two, correct.
Right, Mary and Tom, and then after that?
Right.
You'll bring back two more if they so are.
Correct.
So inclined to do so. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry. Does anybody need a break right now, real quick? Pause a minute. Thank you all. One more, John Scott? We're going to move on to a discussion with Planning and Zoning Commission regarding updating permitted use tables and design criteria manual related to downtown district discussions. And Nick? That's why I took the break, so you, there you go. That was perfect.
I apologize.
Right on time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back on October fifteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission met, and one of the items that they discussed was some changes that they proposed to both the permitted use table as well as the design criteria manual. So what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to just kind of go through the changes very quickly, and then we'll open it up for the commission and the council to have a little bit of dialogue about what the commission talked about back on the fifteenth. Permitted use table, as you know, is in our zoning ordinance, and it's a tool we use to basically decide what can go where. So each zoning category has different uses, and these uses are laid out in this matrix, which we call the Design Criteria Manual, or, yeah, I'm sorry, the permitted use table. So if you look through here, you'll see Ps, you'll see Ss, and you'll see Os. As a reminder, P means that that item is, or that use is permitted by right. S means it requires a specific use permit, which comes to council. And an O means that office use is only allowed there, so think of kind of an administrative type use to any kind of an industry. If there's nothing on that, if it's blank, that means that that use is not allowed in that district. So there are four specific categories that the commission discussed, and those four categories are specifically in the downtown district zoning category. That's the highlighted area up there on the screen. The first, as was mentioned before during our communication for the public, is gasoline stations. Right now, as it stands on the permitted use table, gasoline stations are permitted. The recommendation from the commission was to prohibit gas stations altogether in the downtown district zone. Secondly, warehousing and storage.
Before you go on, though.
Yes, sir.
If they're existing, they're grandfathered.
Correct. They retain what's called an existing nonconforming status, so if we change the code, just as we would for any zoning category, they would be allowed to stay, they just wouldn't be able to expand, or if they close, another one wouldn't be able to come in and get built in this place.
If they burn down or a storm knocks them down, over fifty percent.
Over fifty percent, then they wouldn't be able to redo, correct. It's, it's, wow.
Who was, Councilmember Guinness?
So if an Exxon station sells to Sitco, same spot, same business, is Sitco grandfathered in, or are they out of luck?
They can continue to operate as a different, as a Sitco. If an Exxon gets sold as a Sitco and it's still a gas station, that use would still be allowed in downtown. So whether the brand, it doesn't matter what the, the brand is, if they sell the business to another and the use is the same, then it would still remain as an existing nonconforming. If they wanted to increase the size of the building, they could not do so, however.
If this artist would have been changed this weekend, say a tornado would have hit the Shell Station?
Yes, sir.
And destroyed it?
Yes, sir.
Is he toast? He's lost his life's work?
The existing nonconforming status, at that point, he could not rebuild.
Do you know that his insurance company will not pay him except to rebuild on that exact address? So you want to totally destroy a man and his work, a lifetime of work. What about the guys at Mustang Auto? Been there for forty years.
Sure.
I will never support anything that would do that.
Sure. Understood, and that's, obviously, when we, when you talk with the Planning and Zoning Commission, those are the types of things that they had discussed as well, but, you know, that's why we're here, to get some feedback from the council, so.
Councilmember Rocky?
For the purpose of this, would you define exactly what the downtown district is?
Yes, sir. In fact, I've got a map that I can pull up. So in this case, if you look at the map up there, everything that is in light blue, let me magnify a little bit here for you. Everything that's in light blue is the downtown district zoning district. We're not talking about a geographical boundary. We're talking about a zoning category, okay? So everything that's light blue there that kind of borders South Friendswood Drive is the downtown district zoning, that DD. So basically, from FM twenty through fifty-one down to roughly where the creek is down here, those businesses or those lots that front South Friendswood Drive that are that color, that are that kind of light blue color are downtown district zone. That's what we're talking about. Now, you can see there are a few properties up and down Friendswood Drive. There's a light industrial property right there. There's CSC right there at the corner of twenty-three fifty-one. There's a few other properties that are not zoned downtown district. But the zoning category here in the permitted use table, that DD, is what the Planning and Zoning Commission was talking about.
Are you sure that's still light industrial? My understanding was it went away. Where's Mo?
It's.
It's still light industrial, the one that, where the old big plant is?
Yeah.
That's still light industrial.
The old business district went away.
Okay, but is it, my understanding was, and I'm correct, I'm sure I'm wrong, but I thought it had been put to the downtown district.
They have an option to opt in, the old business.
But I heard it was not optional, that it automatically went in. That's why I was really unhappy that y'all got that by me. I believe in people being able to opt in and not being forced to. Okay, so it's. You can opt in.
You can opt in.
And I noticed that the shopping center where O'Reilly's is, which is actually a warehouse, is not in the downtown?
I'm sorry? Oh, microphone's on.
Okay, where O'Reilly's, that shopping center is not in the downtown district?
It's within the boundaries of the downtown district, but it's not zoned down, it's not, I'm sorry.
All I'm saying is guys like Ray Ford, Mustang, those guys not only pay sales tax on the parts they sell, they pay sales tax on their labor. And I just think if we, we keep talking about economic development, then we're going to handpick and kill a few. I don't understand our thinking.
Can I ask for a clarification? You guys are bringing in four, four particular types of business to us, but the only one in which you're recommending that we not allow at all is gas stations, right?
No, sir. There's actually four categories, and in all four of them, and I've got three more to go.
And you're saying, you're saying they're not, they're not going to, you're not recommending that they be permitted use, Ss?
Correct.
You're saying just not at all?
Correct. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted on the fifteenth to go from P in downtown to nothing at all, meaning it's not permitted at all.
Right, and so for example, and tying on to Jim's question, the Shell Station up at the corner is the only gas station currently in that district.
Yes, sir.
But there are, there are automotive and other places in there as well.
Yes, sir. So let's say that this change took place. Let's say that the vote happened and council went ahead and changed the permitted use table to prohibit gas stations downtown district. If we had a vacant lot downtown and we had a meeting, a DRC meeting or something, or somebody came up and said, "I want to build a gas station on this piece of property," and it's zoned downtown district, it wouldn't be allowed on that zoning category. Now, they could try and rezone, but that also comes in front of council. The council would have the option to rezone it or not. So that's one of four. Now, and all four of them, and I'll go through the other three. The Planning and Zoning Commission went from a use where it was allowed in some fashion, either permitted or with a specific use permit, to not allowing it at all, and this is one of those four gas stations.
That's a double-edged sword, too. Keeps the heat off us or doesn't give us the option of?
Sure. It can be looked at both ways. When the council has the discretion to allow something and not allow something, maybe it's a good thing, maybe it's not. But that's, that's the option with a specific use permit in that case, and we've got two here that I'll show you that, right now, specific use permit is required.
Chairman?
Well, we're on gas station, which I think a little backstory on this would be helpful. Basically, we got a request for a twenty-four-hour gas station directly across from Friends Church. And there was kind of a collective shudder went through the community, you know, thinking about how that hallowed ground would be so dramatically changed by this big glaring, you know, twenty-four-hour day convenience store directly across from what I think all of Friendswood considers ground zero of who we are. And so that's what started this conversation, and unfortunately, we don't really have a way to parse this downtown district. So finally, as to say, we can't do it directly across from the Friends Church, where we might all agree it would be misplaced, you know, because of the whole downtown district. Now, you know, another thought would be that maybe if we do this, that sometime later on, we come in and create a new subset of historic downtown district that would be a smaller subset that would protect the areas that we're most concerned about and, you know, wouldn't, none of us would envision it being the right place for impact wrenches, and somebody would be grinding on a car or repainting it or something, or, you know, that sort of thing. But I just want you guys to know that we didn't just, out of the blue, you know, say, "Well, let's just fence off gas stations." We had a request in front of us, and it's not the first one. This is popped up a couple of times. Fortunately, none of them have found it viable so far, but without this prohibitive move, we're open to that. It could happen tomorrow. And the run on this is eighty years. I mean, they build a station, and we'll all be in the Friends Cemetery, you know, before it goes away. So, you know, just, just want to give you guys that as the backstory.
Thank you, Chairman. Isn't there a way we can protect the existing ones further than?
Certainly. I mean, you can change the ordinance to change that line where it triggers an existing nonconforming status. So fifty percent, council has the option to change that. So, you know, in that situation where you have an existing nonconforming structure, if council wanted to, you could also change it such that if the tornado did come down and destroy a property, then we could move that threshold to where they could go ahead and rebuild.
Yeah, I, I. That might be a little more. Yeah, I don't have a problem with eliminating new ones. For instance, if the guy wants to come back, I'm sure you know that he is vested, if he has contacted you, he is vested, he can build it. There's nothing you could do to stop it now. We learned that in the motel. Anytime he has made any contact with a city, he is from that point vested by those rules, so.
Jim, hold that one second, because my understanding would be at the point we actually have a formal application as opposed to a DRC, which is all we've had at this point. Is that correct, Nick?
Yeah, that's my understanding. We can get inquiries, we can get phone calls, but until such time as an actual application. but until such time as an actual application is submitted to the city, that's a vesting event.
Well, that's where the lawyers get involved.
We got one.
I, I would agree with that.
They did drop off cans in the motel room.
I think we're...
I, I guess I'm, I'm misunderstanding.
With all due respect, council and commission, that's a discussion I would prefer to have with, uh, one or both of you collectively in closed session.
Forget what I said.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with preventing new ones, but, uh, when you...
Take some of these lively, yeah?
When you take Friendswood people and, and drive away everything they've worked their rear ends off for, it's wrong. So, y'all can make it right.
I agree.
I've got three other categories to go.
I know. Well, it's probably gonna be similar to...
Yes, sir. I understand that.
Yeah. But go ahead.
And, and we just, I don't know that when the commission would disagree with that position either. I certainly, we just don't have the purview, you know, and latitude that you guys have in putting these things in place, so...
Before I go any further, it might be a good idea for the commission to open up their meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, David. My fault.
Uh, so this is amended notice of the working session, special meeting, and regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission, to be held Monday, November second, two thousand fifteen, beginning at five p.m. in the council chambers, uh, and for... Commonwealth at City Hall located nine-ten South Friendswood Drive, and call a meeting board. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we just talked about gas stations. Uh, the second category that the commission, uh, workshopped and discussed was item number four ninety-three, warehousing and storage. Uh, that's simply a, an area where goods are kept but not sold. Uh, that would include things like self-storage units, uh, that kind of a thing. That was also unanimous vote. Right now, it's, uh, required with a specific use permit in the downtown district. Uh, the recommendation was for, uh, to be eliminated completely from the downtown district zone. The third category...
Councilmember McGinnis?
One question. Do we have any businesses like that right now, warehousing and storage?
In the downtown district zoning, not to my knowledge. No, sir.
What would you call the big factory?
Light industrial.
Light industrial. And it's also an empty...
Warehouse.
Not, yeah, it's...
So, of, of the four, this is the one I said, "Yeah, let's not permit that, because we want people coming in and out of downtown. We don't want people storing stuff there." So, okay.
And it was the gas station that started the conversation for us? On top of that, we just asked staff to say, "Look over the whole of what could happen down there. It's just one or two other things that might be out of place." And that's where the other four came, three came from, so...
So that's what threw gas on the other three?
Gas really started...
That was Benny Baker. Benny Baker.
Did you work all week on that, or just...
Hey, I got us all to chuckle right.
Go ahead, Nick. I'm sorry.
Uh, the third item is item number five thirty-two, rental and leasing services. Um, car rentals, uh, equipment rentals, United rentals, Sunbelt rentals, those type places. Uh, that, right now, is permitted by right in downtown. The recommendation was to, uh, remove it altogether from, uh, the downtown district zoning.
Isn't there an enterprise behind Chase?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, didn't it used to be over there by the pasta company?
Kind of by the pasta.
Now the dental place? So those places couldn't be here?
They would...
Offices only?
Well, in this point, it would be...
Nothing.
It would be prohibited completely. The, the recommendation from the commission was to remove it completely. So any, there would, any ones that existed would remain as an existing nonconforming use. New ones would be prohibited.
Can I, can I get a clarification of why the, uh, uh, it's like an office, right? I don't understand that one.
Well, I would, I would imagine the intent was, is that you didn't want to occupy three acres of land and put a bunch of rental cars on it.
If you have rental cars, you'd bring your car cleaning facility as well as gasoline pumps.
Well, that's not happening now, but, I mean, I, now, but it's, thank you for explaining that. At least we understand where you're coming from with it. Um, I, I guess one point, I, I found it very convenient to have enterpies over there.
Yeah.
Uh, it's usually been, you know, if it, my wife was, you know, been hit in the back a couple of times. It's been nice to just go over there and pick up the car, drop off the car, um, but...
But it doesn't look like a big lot or anything.
Nah, it's back in the back, and they fill up, but...
Yeah, it's in the downtown behind Chase Bank.
Oh, it is, oh, yeah.
It used to be up there on twenty-three fifty-one.
Well, it's on twenty-three fifty-one now.
They would get, like, United rental and places like that, heavy equipment.
Uh...
And then just remember, this is just...
Okay, that kind of...
That's what I thought, is you were talking about kind of like Sunbelt down there that moved out just across the border. Yeah. Yeah.
You, you put the map back up.
And, and you're, you, you're right, fun of me. I, I think if you were out by the street, it would be very unattractive.
Nick, would you put the map back up?
Yes.
Yeah, is in tents?
Yeah, like rental rentals, that would fall under that category.
He's in a big warehouse back there.
Yeah, they're all... Light industrial back out.
He's back out of the downtown, right?
But you could imagine if you had that tent, tent rental from the center at, for instance, the...
I'm not sure he, no, he's in the dark, but, okay.
'Cause you get, you get back there, and there's big trucks coming in...
Oh, yeah.
Loading and unloading. I mean, it's, it's industrial. It's got a different feel than I think we're trying to gain down town.
Correct. It's...
Oh, he's in the blue.
He's in CSC, right?
Yeah.
What's that?
MHR, oh, that's...
Right.
Yeah.
In the dark blue.
That's a lot of industrial.
He's, he's in the tan, yeah. He's light industrial.
He's in the orange. He's in the orange.
And that's directly behind Dairy.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay. I just don't want to hurt anybody that's already there.
Now, in fairness, we had two commissioners that, I think, voted in favor of leaving the leasing, and, you know, I invite you guys to share your reasons for that. Uh, I guess the option was either just spike it and have nothing, or the proposal was maybe make it special use. But the committee was one, two, in favor of excluding both.
Yeah, I didn't think of the, the United rental.
Well, there, there are, if you could put the definition back up?
Yes, sir.
Because my concern on this specific use, this particular category, was the, the definition is very wrong. There are sub definitions in here that includes car rentals, United rentals, you know, heavy equipment, things of that nature. But, say, for example, it was a, um, rental of musical equipment, a, a music shop. That would probably be excluded, too, I think. So there's, there may be some things within this broad definition that you may want to leave in there. So that was kind of my concern on this particular category, uh, was the definition. There, there's a broad definition, anything rental, everything and everything? And then there's sub definitions that...
We could add a couple more numbers to it.
Yeah, they had, they had...
And pin it in, couldn't we?
Yeah, Mike could retune it, 'cause I think everybody, you know, doesn't want on Main Street a guy walking out and starting up a wood chipper for a client, and, you know, revving it four or five times, and saying, "Yeah, okay, it works good," and him loading it on his trailer, and that Saturday morning's comings and goings in our downtown, you know? So, we're not trying to hurt anybody here. We just, you know, these are kind of blunt instruments we're working with, and we, you know, we love to, to fine tune them and, and, and protect our long-term business net, and also leave ourselves with a, a protected downtown, something that doesn't glaringly happen that we would all have to...
So if we carry this out, it probably, uh, Becky, a couple more digits, we can really narrow it down to the industrial. Okay.
We could, and, and that's a good point. You know, five-three-two is a very broad category. It covers a lot. You can dig down deeper and get more numbers, and you can get more specific into the industries. I think that would require a little bit more work and research, uh, to decide what exactly we'd want to prohibit and not prohibit. Five thirty-three-two is a big umbrella.
And council, you know, the thought is, is that if we did these things, and we did them right now, we would have those protections in place tomorrow.
Gotcha.
We could come back and fine tune and get everything just exactly as y'all like it, but we wouldn't be uncovered for three months while we're doing that, so...
That's a good point, 'cause there's a lot of, uh, there's activity going on right now. But what goes up, comes down.
It would happen tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay. You want to continue to eighty-one eleven? Eighty-one twelve?
Yes, sir. Finally.
Eighty-one eleven, automotive repair and maintenance. Eighty-one eleven, uh, the recommendation was to go ahead and remove that from the, the permitted use table as well. Right now, it's required with a specific use permit. Uh, eighty-one eleven covers the eight-one-one-two as well. So if you were to go ahead and remove eight-one-one-one, that would take care of anything, uh, below that in terms of the, the category. Uh, this, of course, is, uh, would include any type of, uh, auto repair shop. Um, and this was another recommendation that was unanimous, six-oh, uh, from the commission. So those are the four categories in the permitted use table. Um, there's another section dealing with the Design Criteria Manual and Downtown District Standards. Before we go there, I want to make sure that the commission and the council have had a chance to dialogue on this issue.
I just like to say that we did think about Ray Ford and Harkness Brothers, and we know, our intent is not to turn anybody out of business, and we would like to find a way to protect them so that if a natural disaster occurred or a fire, they would have the ability to do it. But we're just saying, right now, where there are not a whole lot of those, that's a clean slate. I mean, we're not letting more in.
Did I understand, David, you want to pass this tonight, and then we'll change it later? Is that what you said?
I would sleep better tonight if we did, because we have equal calling, we're developing review committees, somebody could file a class tomorrow of, of applications, and we didn't, I understand, have the ability to revisit, you know, the worst examples that we've talked about tonight.
That sounds like Nancy Pelosi to me. Let's pass it, and we'll read it later.
I think we have, we have to do something to protect the people that are there, though. Right? I mean, no, nobody thought a tornado was going to rip through town this weekend. And if, and if you're, you know, the Harkness Brothers and you own Mustang Auto, and your deal's wiped out, and the city council had to pass it so they could sleep better at night, and all of a sudden, they can't rebuild or collect insurance money because they can't rebuild a similar structure, we got a big problem on our hands.
I think you could call those out by name, and say that you'll handle them in a special situation. We'll have a special dispensation, because they're the only existing right now.
Right, right.
There's another option, if, if you didn't remove it, and you just kept the S there, that would, that would require then the special approval.
And here's the reason that I think the commission went with, you know, taking away the... Because once it's an S, then, you know, it, it becomes more of a political issue. I mean, it really puts a pressure on you guys, but I think we could tweak the ordinance and give us the protections, give y'all the protections you're looking for better, and then you'd be served by having S's there and a, a compelling, you know, uh, applicant standing in front of you.
I'm not seeing it on our agenda. Is it on your agenda?
There's no action for council to take tonight.
Yeah, so, when you're saying tonight, we can't do it tonight?
No.
Okay. So you're gonna sleep bad tonight? I'm sorry.
Well, we're, we're gonna step upstairs based, and, and based on what we hear from y'all, and, you know, we'll be taking some action.
Yeah.
Those are already permitted uses, right? So they would still have to come to council, even if somebody came in and wanted to buy a gas station there, it's still coming up?
No, we're not.
No, no, no. If it's a...
Some of them are...
If it's permitted...
Some of them are S's.
They have the S's. By, by right, yeah. So the gas station could be there by right by just filing an application.
Go ahead. Councilmember McGinnis?
I have another question. I'm sorry. Uh, Arnold, listening into this conversation, do you think we should have, as you alluded to before, a closed executive session about this topic for... Are, are, in your mind, do you have legal concerns about us changing these categories so soon?
I have no legal concerns with the direction you want to follow, whether it's to, uh, adopt in whole or in part what the commission is suggesting, or going in a different direction. I don't have, I don't have any legal concerns at this point about that.
They've got to give us a recommendation anyway. And you've, have you heard enough from us about it?
I got one more question.
Councilmember Hill?
If you have a convenience store across from the Friends Church, can they sell alcohol? It's not too close to a church.
Well, it's, yes, three...
It's, it's door-to-door with a church, three hundred feet door-to-door with a church.
And it's not property line to property line, it's door-to-door.
Front door.
Probably, probably close, probably close, yeah.
Should have kept it dry.
I'm not so sure the church would sell the property if they, that's what was gonna be there.
But it'd be...
Well, it's not really the churches, uh...
Right across from it?
That's what we're worried about. It's the, uh...
The old pad from the pawn shop.
Location.
Oh, okay.
That's what they've been looking at.
All right.
So historically, what's happened is the Planning and Zoning Commission will dialogue with the council. They'll get some good feedback from the council. Next thing that'll happen is you'll see first reading of an ordinance in front of council, uh, with a planning and zoning recommendation to change the zoning ordinance. So we just want to make sure that we got some good direction here on what the next step is on the permitted use table. Because ideally, what, what could happen is, in the December council meeting, we could put a change to the permitted use table in front of council, but we just want to make sure that if that happens, everybody's on the same page on what those changes would be.
Understood.
I mean, my, my, my opinion is that, look, I don't have a problem with special use permits. I think that that's, you know, that's part of why we're here, is on those critical decisions that, you know, that need to be made on what businesses are allowed or not allowed. I think that ultimately, it should fall on us. It shouldn't fall on a planning and zone, zoning commission that, you know, except for those that are intimately working with you, have any relationship whatsoever. I, so I, you know, I, changing something from a permitted use to a special use, I'm okay with. I, I, I certainly don't have a problem with that. I appreciate, certainly, you guys wanting to take it off the table so that all that is deflected and, and everything goes away. But, I mean, the decisions made like that, we should have to feel the heat up. We should have to feel what the citizens are, are wanting or asking for. So I've got no problem changing something from a permitted use to a special use permit. That's okay. I get concerned when we wipe them off completely, and the ramifications that that may have on existing businesses. I'd just make them all S's, as far as I'm concerned. Now, that's, that's just my opinion. I'd never, I don't want to see a gas station convenience store downtown. I don't want to see a United rental with equipment downtown. All of the examples that you've laid out, for me, are examples that I do not want to see downtown. But, that being said, I think that, that that's what elected officials are up here for, is to make those decisions. And so, to wipe them off completely, and to, and to maybe have some kind of adverse effect on existing businesses, even unattended consequences, I think is a bad precedent to set. And I, you know, I don't think that that's, that, that's certainly not the direction that I would look to go. Again, I agree wholeheartedly with everything that you struck out of here, as far as not wanting it in our downtown district. I think it's a great idea, uh, but to say that we want to get rid of it so that it doesn't have to come before council, I think is the wrong argument.
I'd like to present the other side of that coin. The other side of the coin would be, the people that are coming in will know what's gonna be next to them, and they will know what's allowed before they come in and try to jump through some hoops and be turned down on an SUP.
And that's a good point that makes, is, you know, basically zoning not only is a grant of, of right to do something, but it's a protector for the first act.
Sure.
And, and so that there's a certainty, when that person moves in, that, you know, if they have a quiet business that somehow, another, next door, there's not a, a hobby store where kids are testing BMX bikes and, and skateboards there. And, you know, if you, if you look, this is not unusual, what we're doing here. If you look at the last thirty years, Neighborhood Convenience, for instance, had maybe a hundred permitted uses. But as development of neighborhoods took place, and what have you, where those neighborhood NC zones were, they slowly pulled back those permitted... NC zones were, they slowly pull back those permitted uses, and now today, there'd be seventy of those still existing. So this isn't unusual, what we're talking about. The other thing is, is that if you just study SUP's requests, you find a thing, about ninety-five percent of them somehow or another get approved. So I know you guys feel like you've got the ability to stand there and say no, but, you know, if you just look at the historical record, the fact is that it's not exactly the way it finishes out, so.
I just, I wasn't arguing with you, I just wanted to say.
No, I understand.
It gives people a clear view, just like when we set the time, timeline from permit, or from application to permit, when we were on P&amp;Z together. They have a finite idea of what's expected. Well, you do something that's appealing to us for the downtown, and people have an idea of what the perspective is going to be.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
Yeah.
But I, but I think that can be handled through the SUP.
Agreed.
Is all, is all I'm saying. So, you know, I was, I was just disagreeing with the statement that, that it would deflect heat from us, from having to make decisions on that stuff, if you just completely avoid it from the table. And I think that's exactly why we're here, is to take that heat.
And we have.
And we have, in the past, and we've, we've, we've decided with P&amp;Z on issues, we've decided against P&amp;Z on issues, and I think that that's, anyway. So I, you know, I just, I don't think they should be permitted. So, I'm a hundred percent locked up with you that they don't need to be permitted. I think that they need to be.
What we'd like to do, what we're asking is, to go out, take these off the table, and then go back and tweak an ordinance and bring it back to you that gives you the protections you're looking for on our existing businesses. And anything else that you say, I'd like to still have National Rental Car back there, I think we could fine tune this thing and tweak it, and hand you something that you'd like, give us all the protections. And you know what, if down the road, we need to tweak it further, we can always come back and tweak it.
Sure. And this, this isn't keeping them out of Friendswood, just keeping them out of the downtown district. The city of Friendswood has a very unique character. You know, we're talking about things of culture, character. It takes a strong effort to preserve that. And, you know, I've heard us many times say, we don't want to be like everybody else. We don't look like League City, we don't look like Pearland. We're unique, we want to stay unique, and sometimes we have to be bold, and we have to make a statement, and we have to do things like this. And my only concern is, I think you've heard from everybody, is protecting those that are already here. We shouldn't hurt anybody that's already here and been doing business for forty years, which makes sure we look out for them and take care of them for all situations.
Councilmember Gustafson?
In some respects, by doing this, we may actually be benefiting these businesses, and that they're not going to end up with a new tire store directly across the street from them to compete with.
What is wrong with tire stores?
Hey, I guarantee you, you'd love to have my sales tax.
The amount of people that run them, that's the problem.
You'd love to have my sales tax, I promise you that.
But, so in some respects, I don't think of the Firestone store up there. Yeah, now he doesn't have a competitor, so it may, it may benefit them. He's not going to, Mustang won't have one precedent to say. Well, the argument that's being made is that we're, 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 we risk, we risk taking away their livelihood. I think that sword cuts both ways. And I guess, you know, in the three years I've been up here, I can, there was one fire that destroyed a structure, not necessarily a business, but, and I can think of, you know, there was the, it was a bank or office building, it was where the Walgreens is now, was knocked down by an earlier, last time we had a tornado come through. But other than that, and some that have been here longer, I suspect, can point to structures that met their demise in the downtown area. But I think the likelihood that something like that is going to occur and take away somebody's livelihood is likely that, whereas the likelihood that you're going to have somebody roll in here and want to put something in here that we don't want is significantly greater.
We live in a hurricane zone, the likelihood is much higher than you think for having damage.
If you recommend those people not buy insurance, then, if the likelihood is almost zero.
But even if it got knocked down.
Still.
We could still come back and perhaps something that allowed that person to have.
Right, I, I, you know.
I'm all for it.
Anyway, I just wanted to put that out.
Yeah, I would just be cautious about saying it's a good idea because it prohibits competition in the free marketplace.
I didn't say that was the good reason to do it, John. I just.
That's, that's, that's the way it came out. But, but, in my time on council, though, we have done things with regulations in, as a matter of fact, due to the, you know, in relationship to the FIG factory, where we had ordinances in place that said that if you buy the property, you have to bring it up to code. And that prohibits, you know, so the, the real estate agent selling it with improvements on the property, the guy buys it, he's not going to buy it because the improvements have to be torn down and rebuilt. So in the last two years, I think, we've actually done away with that, that said that you're grandfathered in. You can keep your existing business the way it is with the metal building, and that any additions to that, you have to bring up to code. And that was, that was something that happened a year or more ago.
Well, just like that office building, that we let them do the addition up to code and not.
Right, that's correct.
That's the example I can think of.
Yeah, and, and the intent there was to, to encourage somebody to come in and buy the property and do something with it. You know, you sell it with improvements, only to find out that the improvements are actually not improvements at all. They're a hindrance to you doing what it is that you want to do. So, you know, again, I don't have a problem with the special use permit stuff.
Okay.
So we, we have the option of bringing in ordinance in December, should we?
Yes.
We should do that. And on those four categories, what are we looking for on those four categories?
I think you heard us. You want me to summarize it?
Yes, sir.
Go back to that item where I can.
So we've got permitted gasoline stations right now.
Yeah. The, and the rental and leasing, the, get that out to a couple more digits.
Okay.
Automotive repair and maintenance, we want to take care of Ray Ford and.
Mustang Auto.
Mustang Auto, people that have been here with us. And I think that was pretty much what I heard the council say.
Well, the gas station, the Shell.
Well, that's what I was talking about, gas stations first.
Okay.
Okay, are we clear?
Hand repair.
That they can rebuild their structure as is.
Yeah.
They've been in an accident.
Okay, and as far as the design criteria stuff, that's pretty self-explanatory?
It is, yes, sir, it's very clearly, design criteria manual, they also discuss that.
Yeah.
The idea behind that was to go ahead and standardize what we have. So everything in red that we have is basically.
Strictly.
The proposed changes. So where, right now, it might say metals are preferred material, we're saying it's required. And in addition, where it used to say that the seating should be similar to what's pictured here, we're now saying that it should actually be that model. However, there's a provision in there that says that the P&amp;Z can approve different types of benches of similar size and features. If you go further down, where it talks about the lights, it says the exact same thing.
And what we were concerned with as a council and a commission was making it so one vendor was the only supplier, and we don't want to go there.
And, and we've got language now, where if a guy is getting just raped over the coals, price-wise, as long as he can bring us something that looks similar at a different vendor, he's, we're good to go.
That's, that's the intent.
There, and Tony really was the one that kept us on point on that, and.
That was a good move. All right, Councilmember McGinnis, and then we've got to move along.
Do we have a specified number of benches per hundred feet? Does anyone think we have too many in that specification?
It's two per lot.
Two per lot.
Two per lot.
And these cases brought to us by.
Doesn't matter.
As to what they've seen in other towns.
Yeah.
You know, as to proper sequencing.
Okay.
So if you take two of them small lots, plow them together, make it one lot, it's still two per lot then, right?
Yes, sir, minimum of two per lot.
Okay, but I mean, do you follow my question?
Yes, sir.
If you take two of the little ones, make them one big one, and it's still two.
If it's combined into one lot?
Yeah.
Two per lot.
Because some of them are only forty feet wide.
Yes, sir.
And they're unusable, so they would have to come by.
Yeah, 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 you, you might as well just set up a row of benches. Okay, you understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And now we'll go on to D, and then we have a joint.
Okay, if we are adjourned, that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. And ladies? Discussion, consider schedule of events and plan of finance for the city's Series 2016 Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds and Series 2016 General Obligation Permanent Improvement and Refunding Bonds. Cindy and John Roebuck.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. John Roebuck with BOSE. I did hand out a presentation earlier, I think we have one for the screen, too.
About fifty-three slides, is it?
Tonight, we're here to discuss the issuance of water and sewer revenue bonds and also general obligation and refunding bonds. If you'll humor me, I always like to start off by talking about the bond market. The presentation on the screen was done a couple weeks ago. It's been updated with the handout I handed to you. I do want to point out a couple things on this chart, if you don't mind. The red line represents the revenue index. Both indexes are weekly indexes, give a snapshot of the municipal market across the country. On the far right, you'll see the red line, the current rate is a four-point-oh-five percent, and the general obligation, which is the blue line, is a three-point-six-six percent. The four-point-zero-five on the revenue index is actually one basis point below all historical time lows. So the revenue index is a great time to sell bonds, lowest it's ever been. And the general obligation index is actually point-three-nine basis points, it's point-three-nine percent, three-nine basis points off of all time lows. So again, the reason we're coming here for the refunding portion in particular is because rates are so low, and we can generate some savings that can flow to the city. The second page, or next page, these are the estimated debt service requirements for the water and sewer bond issue. If you're going from left to right, the current total debt service requirements of the city for the water and sewer system on the left, plus proposed principal and interest, and then total debt service requirements on the far right there. We are looking at issuing five-point-six-six million dollars in bonds. And again, these, these are based on current market. This is, we ran these as if we were actually selling these bonds today, and these, these numbers generate proceeds to the city of five million six-hundred-forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. The numbers also do include four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand for reserve fund requirement. The reserve fund requirement is a requirement for all revenue bond issues, is basically set aside at that closing, in case y'all need help paying your principal interest and times or water and sewer revenues are down. In the past, we've done surety policies. Now, after two thousand eight, two thousand nine, the financial crisis, a lot of the insurance companies who provide these surety policies still did, but the problem is, our ordinances state that you have to have the highest rating, triple A. Well, none of those guys have triple rating, triple A ratings anymore. So we have to fund it with, with proceeds of the sale of the bonds, and that's what we're doing here. And down below, you'll see our net server, net revenue available for debt service requirement. That's the revenue the city has to have available for debt service. We have to meet that coverage to actually issue these bonds for this amount. Are there any questions on the water and sewer bond issue?
Coverage requirements is one-point-four-oh?
Yes, sir, of average annual, yes, sir.
Billy, you got any questions?
Not on this one.
Good.
The next page, because of the interest rates I showed on the first page, we have the opportunity to refund some bonds for interest cost savings. As we did in two thousand fourteen, we're looking to refund some water and sewer bonds onto the general obligation side, and there's a couple reasons for that. Water and sewer obviously also, as I showed you, has a reserve fund requirement. And also, your rating is higher on the general obligation, and rates are better on the general obligation side. So we're looking to refund approximately thirteen-point-one million dollars of your outstanding water and sewer revenue and refunding bonds, Series two thousand and six, which have a call date of March one of two thousand and sixteen at par. So we're looking to issue these in December, close in January, which would make it a current refunding, because of one of that ninety-day window. So we, it's not an advance refunding, it's a current refunding. We're taking, taking the proceeds and calling them off within ninety days of the call date. Sorry.
Okay, so we do that, and then we don't have this twenty-thirty timeline? Three-one-twenty-thirty under the principal amount?
No, these will be retired, defeasted, completely off the books of the, of the city.
So is there another page telling us?
Yes, we'll, we'll get to that, next page, yes, sir. And in doing this, we're like, we're looking to save potentially one-point-six million dollars in interest cost savings for the city. The following page, we get into the, the general obligation refunding bond issue. As we talked about in the last page, the refunding portion, we showed first on here, going from left to right, the current debt service requirements of the city, general obligations, debt service on the left, less the bonds be refunded, which was detailed on the page before this, plus the principal and interest on the two thousand and sixteen refunding portion, which generates the one-point-six million dollars highlighted there in yellow, that column there. And then we add in the new money portion of about five-point-four million dollars, plus the interest for total debt service requirements. Now, I will point out that the new money portion does generate six-point-one million dollars in proceeds to the city. And all of these bond issues I'm showing here do include the cost of issuance. It's not, there's not, in addition to the savings, the six-point-one million of savings is inclusive of the interest cost to do these.
Am I understanding this, that we're cutting the, the debt in half? From thirteen to six? Is that what I, is that what I concerned?
Thirteen to six, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm.
The totals here on, on the previous page are thirteen million?
No, no, thirteen to eleven.
Thirteen to eleven?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And again, we ran these true market scale as of today, so the principal and interest, I mean coupon and interest yield, because right now buyers are looking to buy bonds with a premium, they're paying more for bonds, we're able to generate more premium, which lowers the principal amount of bonds we're issuing. We're actually, for the refunding portion, we're ma, trying to match the principal amounts year by year, and really, this is just pure interest cost savings. We're not extending the debt, we're not shortening the debt, we're not restructuring the debt, it's purely for interest cost savings.
And that's where we save the?
The one-point-six million dollars.
And then you gave another number, five?
The, the principal and interest on the new money portion, which is going to be issued out of your general obligation. Six-point-one million dollars in proceeds, yes.
Generate six-point-one million in proceeds to the city.
And I've kind of confused this year, and I apologize, but it's really one issue. It's seventeen million, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand in bonds we're issuing. It's a combination, new money and refunding issue combined. Because of, because in doing that, we actually have some economies of scale for the issuance costs. Instead of issuing two separate bond series, we're issuing one general obligation, and also one water and sewer. There's really two issues we're talking about here, not three.
Okay.
But I wanted to show you the savings that generated by the refunding. Yes, sir.
Councilmember McGinnis first, and then Councilmember Enoch.
So Mayor, I noticed in this that, that refunding portion is for another fifteen years. The new money portion is proposed for another twenty years. As you know, I've been a proponent to try to retire our debt more aggressively and avoid the extra interest payment that goes on with that. If you look at just the new money portion, for every five years that we go down from twenty to fifteen, or from fifteen to ten, it means about one-point-one or one-point-two million dollars in interest rate savings. So I would be a proponent of at least, if we're going to issue the new money, make it fifteen years or less. And I don't, I'll just throw that out there for the rest of council to consider to be, you know, the United States and Texas has a debt problem. Friendswood is actually kind of a shining star in Texas. We manage our debt very well. I'm a proponent of doing it even more aggressively.
Councilmember Enoch?
John, the question I had, I'd like you to elaborate on, is under the estimated savings, you're showing one-point-six, a little over one-point-six million dollars.
Yes, sir.
Is that a true above and beyond savings, or is that just what we're saving in the interest going away under the old debt? But yeah, we're going to have a new interest on that old money.
It's, it's, no, once, it's all in, it's true savings. I mean, once we do this refunding, on March one of two thousand and sixteen, those twenty-two thousand and six bonds are gone. You don't have to pay anything else on them. We've paid off everything that's callable, seventeen on to, down to twenty-thirty. They're retired. This replaces that. This bond issue we have on this page replaces that. So the debt service difference between the bonds we actually are defeating or paying off compared to the bonds we're actually issuing, issuing to do that with those proceeds, generates those savings.
But I guess the question I have is, on, under the two thousand and six bonds, we've already paid issuance cost on that money.
You have, you have.
We've already paid the majority of interest on that money, and by refinancing that, we're paying new issuance cost, and we're paying new interest. that, we're paying new issuance cost, and we're paying new interest on that principal again for 20 years.
I would agree with that. You are paying issuance cost again to do this, that's correct, but...
So does that take that into consideration, and it's still a $1.6 million savings?
That's correct, yes. Well, I'm not, I have, from 2006 to now, no, I haven't taken that into consideration because you already paid that. That was issued for a specific purpose. This refunding, basically, I want to say it's like refinancing your house, but it's not, because we actually have maturity amounts and different yields and coupons each year. But this is, I mean, this is a true savings the city will recognize if we do this deal. It includes all the issuance costs, and it includes what these, what you'll pay on these bonds, and those other bonds will be gone.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That makes you understand.
Okay.
Councilmember Gustafson?
What are the issuance costs?
God, I thought you might ask that, so have it ready. For the new money portions, about $68,000, and that includes, I mean, that's bond counsel, printing, rating, attorney general fee, our fee. It also includes what we pay the underwriters to sell the bonds.
Do we have a breakout of that cost anywhere?
I can send it to you, I don't have it with me tonight.
Any of that negotiable?
A lot of it's based contracts.
Is any of it negotiable?
No.
None of it?
It's based on, it's based on per bond.
I'd still like to see some.
It's a $68,000 cost to save $1.6 million, is that what I hear?
No, that's the new money portion. The refunding portion is about $152,000. So $152,000 to save $1.6 million.
10 percent of the cost.
I don't need a break.
Councilmember Rocky.
Mo, correct me if I'm wrong, we had two options to fund that clarifier, right? One was to fund it ourselves, which is what we're talking about here.
Correct.
And the other was to let Gulf Coast fund it, and we just paid for it in the fees.
Correct. After further discussion, we find that it may be more advantageous for us to issue our own debt. Harris County MUD 55 had opted to go there by themselves, and so it didn't make sense for Gulf Coast to issue debt on our behalf. We had favorable by doing it ourselves.
Agreed. I just want to make sure that we stated that we had passed that point of that decision, and we were going to fund it ourselves.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember McGinnis.
Mayor, I forgot to mention that John did prepare the schedules for all of these bonds. I think I'm the only one that has copies for 20 years, 15 years, and 10 years, and I would recommend that all council receive this to evaluate them.
Cindy actually has copies of them. Ran it right before we got here.
Three copies?
John, can you go for the annual, the impact on the annual debt service, if you shortened the?
Yes, it, it, it's give and take here, thank you, Mr. Rucker. It's give and take. The shorter the structure, the more interest, principal interest you pay over that period of time.
15 years would be?
Would be, well, it'd be cheaper overall, but at any given year in those 15 years, it's going to be more expensive than the 20-year, because you're compressing $6.1 million in proceeds from 20 years to 15 to 10. And so if the city can handle it from a tax rate standpoint or revenue standpoint, it makes sense to do shorter, but it's a give-take.
And that was the, that was the point I was wanting, was thinking, I understood, was that it is going to have an impact on our INS portion of our tax rate during that period of time.
Yes, sir.
It'll affect our rating?
It will affect the portion of our tax rate that goes to pay debt service.
It'll increase it?
It will increase that portion of the tax rate.
And to the question, will it affect your rating? Rating companies love to see you pay it off-center, but if it puts strain on your INS fund balance and how you pay for the debt, it will hurt your rating. So it's, again, it's a give and take.
But if we finance for a shorter period of time, we should get a lower interest rate, shouldn't we?
You should, yes, and so you'll pay less interest.
Right.
But again, because you're financing 6.1 instead of 20 years to 10 years, you have higher principal amounts.
Right.
Which cause the interest.
But we were talking 15, not 10.
Right. Well, for the new money portions, for the Water and Sewer and the GO, new money pieces, we ran them 20, but yes, the council member did say 15 years, which we can definitely do.
And a part of our benefit here is we're chasing the interest rate downward in this particular situation from 2006 to where we are today. We're in a fortunate situation where the, we're at historical lows for interest rates.
Exactly right, yes, sir.
But kind of on Councilman McGinnis's point, though, I'd really like, it feels like we keep refinancing debt, refinancing debt, we're just pushing it down the road, so I'm all up for trying, if we can shave five years off our financing period. I'd love to have this council have a vision of trying to get out of debt, and we start putting aside money, so we will pre-fund future capital investments, we don't have to finance to pay for these down the road, but we have it on, we can write a check out of pocket for these down the road, if we've got to go build a road, or, or as I've said, for our third bond issuance, and hopefully, you know, that's something we can pay for out of pocket rather than having to go and finance.
So tonight, looking for me, do we look at the 15 years? Because the next page, I'll tell you why I'm asking. The next page, we are going to come back to you on December 7 with a sale, if I get your approval tonight to move forward.
With council's permission, what I'd like to do is to provide the impact on our rate, our tax rate and the Water and Sewer rate of the change in the years, just so that you could have that information.
And we can, side note, we can move forward with our process. If you see here, we're working on an offering document for you guys right now. We can move forward with that right now, just once we get the idea, if it's 15 or 20 years, we'll plug those numbers in and get the rating agencies and move forward. But if y'all say this is what y'all want to do with the refunding and the new money pieces, we'll get that going today, or tomorrow.
I think it's far enough down the street. I'd hate to hold it up now, especially since we're at historic lows. We need to lock in on this, but I think going forward, I think the challenge for this council is let's figure out how we can start paying our debt off sooner and financing our debt for a shorter period of time and things of that nature.
Councilmember McGinnis?
We can, we can take one step to that and just say 15 years. That's, it's going to save us, you know, per five, roughly, per $5 million of loan, it's going to save us $1.1 or $1.2 million of interest.
So if we take that stand, how much is that going to delay you guys by?
Oh, it won't delay us at all.
Oh, it won't delay you at all?
No, no, sir.
Oh, I thought Cindy was saying it would take...
We'll have to put together some numbers to get back to you guys.
Okay.
How much would that raise our debt service, Roger?
That's what they're going to get back to us, yeah.
Do you have the?
You got it right there?
I have, on the, on the GO portion. Let's see here, this refunding. We are looking at roughly, it's going to, it's going to decrease your total debt service requirements, but it's going to increase by about 100, and it looks like about $100,000 a year, total debt service requirements, for 15 years.
Five years less.
Yeah, it'll be five years less, yes, sir.
So for $500,000, we save?
Five years.
Five years.
Five years shorter. Save about $100,000. Well, it'll be, cost you about $100,000 more.
A year.
But you'll pay.
Debt service to save 5,000, or five years at... It's here in front of me.
It's going to be about $1.3 million saved.
My guess.
Which cost.
Do we have a general out of 15?
$100,000 additional per year.
Years.
For 15 years.
For five years.
For five years?
For five years, because we're knocking it down to 15 from 20.
Yeah.
Four.
Well, if you want from 20 to 15, it's 15 years, 50. If it's going to be an additional $100,000 to use...
That's 1.5, then.
It's 1.5 million to save.
1.3.
Call it, it should, it should equal about the same.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm saying, hold on.
Ask John.
Use your mics, guys.
I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at 15 to 20 years, and we're paying right now the 20 years, about 1.8. Now, every year's a little different.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of eyeballing it. And looking 18, 2018, and 20-year, we're paying about $3.8 million. Here, I'm showing 18, $3.9 million. And 2024, $3,075, $3,183. So it's about $100,000, maybe a little less, $100,000 a year, more.
More for 15 years.
For, for, well, it's going to be a little less in the out years because, then just write.
I mean, it's just like refinancing your house from 30 years to 15 years. You're going to pay more every year. You pay off, yeah, you'll pay off your house center, and you're going to save a huge amount in interest.
You're saving the entire payment on the last five years. That, the, it's not that I'm opposed to it, I just, I don't have the numbers, and that's all I'm asking for. And if it's going to take him a little while to do it, I don't know if we could meet again in a couple of weeks to review this, a very quick meeting, and then have the information that we really...
What's our deadline?
Well, we don't have deadline. We can push this back, it's, I mean, it's just a matter of when, y'all need the money.
I think he's trying to strike while the iron's hot right now.
I'm going to ask Roger. Hey, Roger, you're probably the best financial officer in the state. What's your opinion?
Don't quit while you're, quit while you're ahead.
Exactly. I wanted to ask Mo, as far as the timing on the general obligation portion for the fire station?
Correct.
What's the timing on the need for that?
We are going out for bids, as Patrick reported earlier tonight, right now, and so there's only so many days the contractor can hold those prices related to the fire station. With respect to the Water and Sewer side, the plans are complete, and they're being advertised right now, and Gulf Coast is looking to award a contract in January and February, and they can't do so without the money being in the bank. So we are on somewhat of a timeframe.
Back to you, Roger.
Well, in answer to Mayor Pro Tim Hill's question, the concern I have is what I was asking before, is that it does impact the tax rate, the INS portion of tax rate negatively for that period of time, and I understand the long-term impact as well. If council's prepared to realize that, that it's going to have a negative impact on that tax rate in years ahead, it's just like as you, as...
We're going to increase our tax rate.
Yes, it's going to increase the tax rate. As you mentioned, it's like when you refinance your house and you're shortening it, it may have temporary, 15-year temporary pain, where your debt, your payment has actually gone up because you shortened your debt so much. So you've got to be prepared to do that.
Another option is to look to carve $100,000 out of what we're spending for the next few years to pay this, and I'm sure there are opportunities there.
Well, and don't forget, we've got these bond obligations out there, too, that, aside from the Water and Sewer, that is going to, we've already forecasted an increase in our tax rate. So this is a...
This would be on top of that.
This would be on top of that, gentlemen.
And I understand council's direction to continue carving out of our budget. Staff does a very good job of being lean and efficient, but at some point, you're into bone marrow and not bone. And I know there's a doctrine room, so I apologize.
We should have done this before budget. We've already done the budget. It's a done deal, and to tell Roger, you know, you've got 100 grand less to run the city on because we think we're going to save some money. I'm not sure how much we're going to save.
We increased the budget, we increased spending, so we didn't cut spending this year, we increased our...
I'm talking about what we have budgeted to run this city for 2016, it's already been set.
Yeah, I agree.
If it was an increase, that's fine, and there's some things in there that we paid for that I personally don't think we needed, but I'm on vote. But anyway, I just think it's the horse is out of the barn, and I still don't know how much money we're going to save, actual dollars.
That's why I guess maybe we could come back in a couple of weeks when we have the numbers and maybe decide. Well, important decision.
Go ahead.
These numbers change daily.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's, the market moves in the short term.
I understand why you want to do this now.
No, no, I mean, I'm even saying the short term, if Fed changes their interest rates in the next couple of months, then the short term's going to go up and be a...
The fact is, we can save 1.6 right now.
Where the refunding portion is.
Right. If we do what we do, we've got the budget set, we cannot increase our debt, and we can save 1.6. That seems like a win to me, rather than wait and kick the can.
We're not going to finance it at a lower interest rate.
No.
No.
So.
Well, what is?
John, what is the interest rate for 20 versus 15 today?
Hold on one second. I have the Water and Sewer numbers here, 15, 10, 15, 20 years. The all-in interest rate on the 15-year is at 3.5 percent, and on the 20-years, it is a 3.89 percent. And the GO will be a little less than that because it's general obligation, but...
I say let's go with a deal we've been having. Well, it's not on the agenda to decide tonight, anyway. So what were you looking for?
I'm just looking for some guidance to go ahead and get ready for the December 7 sale.
Have you got enough guidance?
I've got a lot of guidance.
All right.
Are we consensus, or are we still discussing?
Do you have enough guidance?
What consensus do you believe you have?
Well, am I running 15, 20, 5?
Mayor, my recommendation is 15. Do we have consensus on that or not?
No.
I think that's the question.
No.
I'm not, I'm not consencing anything until I see numbers.
Right.
And all we have heard is this.
Yeah.
And so when you bring it back, can we see it in both ways, what it looks like to refinance it over 20 years and what it looks like at 15 years?
Well, the refinancing, I wouldn't recommend change because it affects the savings. You're going to have some negative savings in some years. This is just for new money portion, you're talking about 15 years? Is that correct, council member?
Because the other one is already, the refunding is already at 15.
The refunding is 15, and the refunding is just set because that's how far the bonds or refunding go out to.
So we'll see in December.
We're talking about just the new money portions, correct? Okay.
John, if you pushed the schedule out 30 days?
We can do that.
And had this, and had two different scenarios to present to council in December, and I understand you're pushing the whole schedule out, and you're not selling at the same time.
We can definitely do that.
You can do it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
It was going to be an easy night, didn't it?
Item six, closed executive session. A, communication from the public regarding closed executive session topics. Is there anybody that would like to talk to us about it? Okay. Counsel may convene into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code pursuant Section 551.071. Consultation with the attorney regarding contemplation, contemplated litigation arising from settlement of legal action, white realty interest, LTD versus City of Friendswood. We're, I move, we move into executive session.
Do we have five minutes before that? Or after?
Or after.
Or during?
Or during. I'm, I'm convened back from executive session. Sorry, it took so long. Item eight, special recognition and acknowledgements, a special presentation of the Five Star Spirit Award for the third quarter of 2015 to Corporal Jason Galvez and Officer James Price, Friendswood Police Department. Did I say it right?
Mine was great.
Yeah.
Yours was the hardest.
The price was right.
I've never had a two-fisted award before, but that's what we've got tonight. As you know, you've heard about our Five Star Spirit Award before, presented quarterly to an employee, or in this case, to employees, who have exhibited the qualities of courtesy, competency, reliability, professionalism, and enthusiasm. And the mayor has announced that those recipients are Corporal Jason Galvez and Officer James Price. I was thinking for a few minutes this afternoon between storm-related activities about the fact of, about what our police officers do for us. And I guess I'd summarize it, if I could, very briefly, and they take care of the public. So that's pretty simple. I can understand that. And then I started thinking, what does that mean? And very quickly, I started just thinking about things that, that came to mind. Things that have happened here, that I've heard on the radio that's in the office. And I called Bob and said, what in the world was going on with that? Looking for an elderly person who's left their home. Keeping kids safe as they arrive and leave school. Enforcing traffic laws to protect us all from those who choose to ignore them. Investigating crimes that have occurred that day, or that week, or that night. Working to ensure that those who are in the business of providing illegal drugs to our citizens are prevented from doing so, or are punished if they've done so. Teaching citizens to protect themselves. Assisting victims of crime. Controlling animals that are on the loose. And most recently, even dealing with bank robbers. Tonight, however, we have two police officers, Jason Galvez and James Price, who did something that probably all other officers have done in this city. And it was a small thing, but it was an important thing. They stopped and assisted a citizen with a flat tire. Sounds pretty simple, but if you're that citizen, and if you're having a problem, that's a big deal to you. I believe these guys would agree that they're being recognized in part because the citizen wanted to highlight the positive work our police officers routinely do. They weren't looking for recognition, but they were providing their assistance in an effort to serve the citizens of Friendswood. As I said, their charge was taking care of the public as best they can, and that's what they were doing. And I congratulate them for being the recipients of this quarterly Five Star Spirit Award. I appreciate these guys and all the men and women that serve us so ably. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'll just say, I really do appreciate the community support. I know it's kind of a tough time for law enforcement in our country right now, but working in a city like Friendswood definitely makes it a lot easier on us. So appreciate it, guys.
Thank you very much.
Likewise. Appreciate the recognition.
Thanks.
Item nine, joint public hearing. To receive comments from the public, both oral and written regarding zone classification change requests for 3.665 acres known as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Cowards Creek Office Park. Property located at 1100, 1102, 1104, 1106, and 1110 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from a planned unit development specific use permit, ordinance number 2001-05, to a revised planned unit development specific use permit to allow for NAICS use number 8121, personal care services, NAICS use 8129, other personal care services, and NAICS use 8139, business, professional, labor, political, and similar organizations. Would you like to open your portion?
At this time, we'll call our meeting to order. And I might begin with Aubrey, if she could, as a staff person, give us a presentation of basically what we're doing here and why?
Yes, sir. This property, as described in the agenda, is located approximately 1100 South Friendswood Drive. There's currently five buildings on the property. The most recent one was constructed just this year. It was part of the original site plan approval that was done for that property back in 1998. So they do have an existing specific use permit on the property. It included 21 uses that were actually listed in the ordinance. We're using this ordinance to clarify and tie our NAICS reference numbers to their uses, just for clarity. And then they're also requesting these three additional uses on the property. Other than that, like I said, the property was the original site plan back from 98. All the parking that they proposed at that time is existing. And I think there won't be any more exterior changes to the property.
So really nice finish up of this project. And at this time, we'll just ask if anyone would like to speak in favor of this project? Please step to the mic. Anyone want to speak in favor? Hearing none, any would like to speak in opposition? Mayor, I don't see anyone like to speak either way, so at this time, we'd like to adjourn our meeting, if that's okay.
You can ask.
Does this change allow like a massage-type business where one currently isn't permitted?
Yes, actually, I think the proposed use was a hydrotherapy-type massage, kinda like.
Bergamas.
Yeah.
Okay.
So spa-type.
Not a foot massage.
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Are you guys going upstairs?
We are actually gonna go.
Oh.
Upstairs and take.
Okay.
All right.
See you in a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, communication from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on their next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen's comment period. Jerry Erickson?
Couple items on your agenda tonight, referring to BayHEP. For many years, I was a great proponent of BayHEP. It was called ClayDEF back then. And in fact, I went on the Keep It Sold mission to DC about six times. A number of times representing the city and one time as a private individual, which is a lot, what a lot of people do. Something happened over the years where they used to be bringing us leads, very supportive of us, a very close relationship, almost a fiduciary relationship. And then here recently, it seems that they were arguing against us on the Whitcomb property. And, and then at a meeting here I had not too long ago, another one of their board members was saying, I can paraphrase it, that it was like a chess game. And they were four moves ahead of the city, and the city didn't even know it. And they're still two heads, two moves ahead of the city and laughing at us. And I don't like to be laughed at, and I don't think we should be giving money to people who laugh at us. I would request that you don't fund BayHEP.
Bob Mitchell?
Mayor, city council, thank you for the opportunity.
You've got, you've got three minutes. I'll raise this to 30 seconds on this one.
Okay, mayor, thank you and the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, I want to talk about the importance that I think that the City of Friendswood brings to the Bay Area Houston Economic Partnership as a regional city, and the hard work that we do for the city and the region as a whole. We listened to you last, at the last meeting, voiced some concerns or asked us to go back and take a look at some contract issues. We did that. Dan and I sat down, made some adjustments to the contract. We forwarded to the city. We hope you give serious consideration to that today. Again, I, I do value and have always valued our relationship and look forward that we continue a more than a 17-year relationship that we've had in the past. I would ask, though, that Mr. Erickson will meet me after the meeting. I would like to know who by name made those kind of comments, because I can assure you, I don't have a board member on my board that would ever talk like that. So if Mr. Erickson would meet with me, after this meeting, I'd love to discuss with him who that person might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Brody?
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Dr. Sam Brody. I live at 2513 Pebble Lodge Lane in Friendswood. And I'm here tonight to speak as a expert and a concerned resident in support of the Bay Area Houston Economic Partnership. An organization I know well. In my capacity as a professor at Texas A&amp;M, a director of a statewide research center, and the head of a major national science foundation project to look at storm surge suppression in Galveston Bay. I've been in partnership with BayHEP for several years. And I can tell you, they've been a huge help at helping us understand, articulate flood risk reduction, flood vulnerability in this community, in your neighboring communities. As you know, Friendswood's one of the most flood vulnerable towns in the United States. Made great strides, and I think BayHEP has helped that. It's made our work better. It's helped this community become safer and more economically viable. As an expert, it's a no-brainer. This is a marquee institution. I don't know what the innuendos are in the personal politics, but as an expert, this is a top-shelf organization that, and I encourage you to continue to support it. As a resident, I don't want my tax dollars to go anywhere else. I really don't want my tax dollars to go anywhere else, having worked with this organization for several years. And I know my neighbors haven't. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Arturo Machuca?
Thank you. Good evening. Again, my name is Arturo Machuca. I'm a long-term, a resident of Friendswood. I live here at 211 Whispering Pines. I am an aviation executive. I work, my offices are located here at Ellington Airport, just down 2351 here, you know, from Friendswood. As such, I have had the opportunity to work with the Bay Area Houston Economic Partnership for several years now. And, and the work that they do to bring economic development to Ellington and to the region. I have found that the work that BayHEP has been doing is very productive and of great value to my work into Ellington Airport. They've been, you know, instrumental in several big projects that we have achieved because they've been supporting the, the projects that we've done there. BayHEP has played a critical role in, in helping us to maintain and to grow the military presence at Ellington, from which not just Ellington, but the entire region benefits. BayHEP's efforts were crucial back in 2006 to prevent Ellington from being closed through the base realignment and closure process. And BayHEP will be an important member in helping us to prevent future BRACs or, you know, the, the realignment closing of the, the base in 2017 and 2018, which has the potential to, to have a very negative impact on Ellington and, and again, and the entire region, right? This is, we'll benefit from the military presence that we have here. Just a couple of additional points. They've been supporting the development of the, the spaceport project that, that we just, I guess, were able to, to, the designation that we just achieved as the 10th commercial spaceport in the nation. They were supporting the project and, and they've been helping us to, to obtain the, the permits that, that we have acquired. They also have been supporting a project that we have to build a new tower, and they're in the process of helping us obtain substantial funding from the state of Texas. So for all those reasons and many more, I would strongly encourage the Friendswood City Council to continue its agreement with BayHEP and to preserve the longstanding relationship that you have had. As a citizen, I believe that this region is better with, with BayHEP. And certainly, Friendswood is better off with an agreement in place with BayHEP. Thank you for your, for your attention.
Michael Cornet?
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Michael Cornet. I'm president of Texas Citizens Bank and a citizens of Friendswood. I reside at 224 Salmon Creek here in Friendswood. And I do appreciate the opportunity to address you on behalf of the Bay Area Houston Economic Partnership. My affiliation with BayHEP goes back actually to the ClayDEF days in the early 1990s. I've served as a board member on that, on that group and also on the executive committee at, at various times. I've seen them over those, those years tackle some very sensitive issues, some of which have been brought up tonight, such as the NASA funding, the BIGS Water Act. And they have had profound impacts on our immediate area as well as, as well as the region. BayHEP, through their relentless ability to maneuver through party lines and bring people together, have kept and created jobs within our city and in this region. The BIGS Water Act, through their efforts, brought light to something that could have been very detrimental, not only to the City of Friendswood, but to our entire region. And, and they, they really spearheaded much of that, much of those changes. Years ago, I too traveled with, what was ClayDEF at that time, went to Chicago and with a, some of my constituents. And we brought a team of people back to this region, which created jobs and, and economic growth in this region. So I've, I've had the blessings of travel, traveling with them as well. They serve some 14 cities in our area with the interest of helping develop economic growth in the area and/or they keep quality of life. And we know in Friendswood, quality of life means an awful lot to us here. So they, they keep that as a focal point. The folks that are employed at, at BayHEP are very energetic. They're can-do people. They've got a lot of wealth and talent in their groups that, that assist them with some of their endeavors that they, that they undertake. They have the ability to pull corporate leaders together and politicians in order to get things heard for our region. They have very sound work ethics. They're very honorable people. They want the best for Friendswood and other cities in the region, so I, I commend them. As a resident of Friendswood, some of my concerns are maintaining our, our quality of life and keeping our taxes down. I think that's been mentioned here. And I know that I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anyone, there's not anyone more qualified than BayHEP, in my opinion, that helps address some of these issues. So if the question tonight is whether we're getting our money's worth out of BayHEP for what they do for our region, I think they're a real bargain. And I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. Appreciate you hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Diana Taylor?
Good evening, mayor, council. Thank you for giving me the time to do this. I'm Diana Taylor. I live in Friendswood and I work in Friendswood with movie National Bank on West Parkwood. I've had the opportunity to work with BayHEP for quite a while in my banking career and currently serving on two of their committees, one of them being the healthcare committee. So I'd like to focus on that. You know, the growing healthcare industry is just really important to our business as a bank. And it's important to the city and this region, keeping all of this local. I've personally, excuse me, I've personally seen the value that BayHEP brings, making this region competitive and bringing this industry and other industries, attracting them to this area, and bringing jobs to this area. The bottom line is, I feel they're good for our business, they're good for my customers, and I would strongly encourage you to maintain your relationship with BayHEP. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Conrad?
Hello, mayor and city council. My name is Mark Conrad. I, I own a company called Express Employment Professionals, which is here in, in Friendswood. Moved to Friendswood 15 years ago because of a corporate relocation. And in 2004, I decided to open my own business. So I'm a live here, work here, because both I live at 2002 Pebble Lane. Since opening my business, I have placed nearly 1,000 people with area companies for full-time jobs and actually placed around 11,000 contract positions over that period of time as well. I have a regional-based business. And that business supports the Houston Bay Area, Galveston County region. But I chose to open my business in Friendswood. Before opening my business, the first step that I made, the first port of call I made was to BayHEP. I needed data, I needed market information on employees, employers throughout the area. And they were my first port of call, and I've been doing business with them for the last 10 years as, as, as a member. The local and regional support provided by BayHEP has been key in partnering with my business over the last 10 years. And I've continued to invest in the organization since that time, even 2008, 2009. And I've continued to invest in the organization since that time, even 2008, 2009, when the recession hit. One of the few organizations that I continued because I could actually validate the value that was coming to my business. My involvement with BayHAP, I was an international guy. That was locally, I didn't know politics, what was going on. Having a local small business changed that for me. And I've since been involved with a board member of BayHAP, been on the executive committee. I was asked to start the Small Business Committee for BayHAP back in 2006, and I've chaired it ever since that time. I've been involved, and they were instrumental in getting my involvement as a board member for communities and schools. And because of the alliance, BayHAP, I decided to submit an application to be involved in Friendswood Economic Development Partnership, and had been involved with that for a number of years. The advantages to my business in the community of local small businesses that operate regionally, I think has been an important link to our business. From my perspective, as a local business and a resident, the relationship extends Friendswood far beyond just the boundaries of the city. It's not just business growth, but it's the quality of life by providing us with important perspectives and a link with other cities, other economic development alliances, our schools, to our colleges, and all the businesses that exist in Friendswood that don't just do business here, but do business regionally. And that's an important part. So, I hope that you'll support and continue to support the funding for BayHAP. Thanks.
Brent Cockram.
Close enough. Thank you, Mayor. Brett Cockram, I'm the area president for Branch Banking and Trust, and I appreciate your time this evening to speak on behalf of BayHAP. I'm a Friendswood resident. I own a home at 2308 Halls Creek Court in West Ranch. Moved here about two and a half years ago to bring our bank to the greater Houston area. At that time, I got the opportunity to pick anywhere I wanted to live, and I wanted to move to Friendswood. And part of the reason for that is because of the work that you guys and your predecessors have done to create a great environment where we have awesome schools, and I don't have to pay for private school, and I can come down here and know that my family's going to be safe when I'm working in the region, and we appreciate that a bunch. Also, part of that is because of the macroeconomic environment that is so strong here in the area, not just the businesses that are here, but also in the greater Bay Area, that where folks may not work here in Friendswood, but they want to live here for the same reasons that I do, and the work that's been done to bring and retain those good businesses here in the area. A lot of that work has been done by, of course, city governments, by chambers, and by organizations like the Bay Area-Houston Economic Partnership. As soon as we got here, we unpacked our stuff and made a beeline down to organizations like the local chambers and economic partnerships and alliances because we knew that retaining that good business environment was crucial and vital to the success of our business. Without people having jobs, there are no mortgages because people aren't buying homes. Without businesses moving here, there are no commercial banking relationships to attain and retain. And so, all that is completely interlinked. And BayHAP exists to formally kind of link all those things together in a joint effort to bring these 14 cities and other areas together to say, hey, whether you get the job, or Webster gets the business, or League City gets the business, we all benefit, right? Because hopefully, some of those people that will be employed by those companies would rather move to Friendswood, just like I did. We thank you for your time. I appreciate your 17-year relationship with BayHAP, and I ask that you continue that because it's not about the $14,000 or $18,000. It's not about one budget on the line, on the budget line item here. This sends a message that it may not be sending the message that you intend to send, that either the work that they're doing is not a good investment for the $14,000 or $18,000, and we haven't benefited from it, or that, hey, it was just, hey, this was just about 18 grand. This is not about business partnerships and business relationships and investments in our future. I can tell you, for our company, we make that investment, and we made it last year, and we will make it next year. And I would ask that you guys do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Communication from Committees and Special Reports, annual report from Friendswood Historical Society by President Ann Whitaker.
She wants to get a drink of water. She'll be right here.
We'll jump to the city manager's report when she comes back. Go ahead, Roger.
There she is.
Go ahead.
We'll go ahead and get just a short, relatively short list. Reminder of Fall Hall, in conjunction with America Recycles Day, the city in Keep Friendswood Beautiful are holding the annual Fall Hall. It's our annual, or semi-annual, community cleanup and garage sale event. It's Saturday, November 14th, at Centennial Park, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So, let me emphasize, this is not an area-wide cleanup event. It's presented for the benefit of the citizens of Friendswood, and we may get more debris, woody debris than we generally get.
Than we generally get.
Secondly, Veterans Day Luncheon is this Wednesday, November 4th. The Friendswood Senior Citizen Program and VFW Post 7109 and Ladies Auxiliary, along with AT&amp;T Pioneers and HEB. HEB will be sponsoring the 6th Annual Veterans Day Luncheon, and that event is held at the Activities Building from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Thirdly, I wanted to announce to you that the city of Friendswood was awarded the 2015 Urban Area Security Initiative grant that our Fire Marshal's Office applied for earlier this year. This request was submitted for radio equipment upgrades in the amount of $51,000, and they're planning on using that money to purchase handheld and vehicle radios for the volunteer fire department, fire division this year. So, I appreciate Terry Byrd and his office, his office's work in applying and obtaining that grant. The police department also has received notice of a grant award. The Victim of Crime Act application for grant funding was awarded. That typically is an annual award, and we have received it for seven, this is the 17th year that we will have received it. However, we were approved for 25 months instead of the typical one-year period. So, that's a great thing, that we don't have to look at this for a couple of years or have the possibility that it not be funded. And that is a very important grant funding that we get that helps enhance our crime victim services here locally. I wanted to remind folks that as we're doing the library expansion project, that the brick pavers are still available for purchase. They can look at those online, or they can talk to the folks at the library. Purchase a four-by-eight brick paver. You can have a personalized message, laser engraved on it, and they'll be placed in the new main courtyard or the children's courtyard. Cost of the paver is $100, and they tell me that is tax deductible, but I'm not a tax attorney. Lastly, what a Halloween, early Saturday morning. An EF2 category storm, as everyone here knows, touched down the city of Friendswood. Just wanted to give you a few highlights of that day and subsequent events. The Office of Emergency Management was activated early that morning. I won't go through the list of texts or the time series of texts that were coming across my phone from various people, so it didn't take many of them, and I realized this was more than just the standard, we've got a big wind or a heavy rain. The Office of Emergency Management was activated at approximately 6:00 AM. Representatives from emergency management, police department, FEFD, the community development department, city manager's office, staff, the EOC throughout the day. Public works, employees worked throughout the day removing trees and limbs and cleaning drains so that the streets would be clear and to prevent as much flooding as possible. Drainage did very well when it could flow. It's when the drains get clogged up that create the problems. We received approximately four and a half inches of rain during the 12-hour period. There was one point in time, as we were at the EOC, that we can monitor the rain gauges, and within 15 minutes, or in a 15-minute period, one inch of rain fell, and 30 minutes, an inch and a half fell. So, there was a period of time, it was extremely heavy. Fire department responded to approximately 68 calls with the 27 documented incidents, ranging from power lines down to rescuing residences that were trapped in their homes. Police department responded throughout the day. They utilized their standard vehicles that they have, as well as the high-water vehicles. Just a week before, we had, as Bob said, we had exercised those in another rain event, so they were ready to go and did well. Responded to a total of 49 reported incidents. EMS responded to two calls during the incident, and again, public works worked very, very hard in doing their important work. At the height of the storm, there were 1,200 residences without power. At this time, we think there are approximately 100 that are still without power, and that number continues to go down, and we're told that Texas and Mexico Power was hoping that they'd have all power restored this evening. This is as of probably four hours ago, so I hope that number's less now. Damage assessment teams observed the area immediately after the storm. There were some reports from a couple of folks near and dear to me in city manager's office and community development who talked about vehicle floating. I hope that was a joke, but we'll see. I told them they should have taken a boat if they were going to assess damage where the vehicle's going to float. I don't think that was accurate. It's estimated that approximately 50 residents were damaged as a result of the incident. One was a total loss, two received major damage, and the others were relatively minor. And I say relatively because it's only minor when it's your neighbor's house and not yours. Two commercial properties have also reported damage. We met with our solid waste disposal contractor this morning, Progressive Waste Services, and they went out immediately and began assessing the impacted area for the amount of debris that they were going to be dealing with. They began that pickup at approximately noon today and made initial passes through the Chester, Rustic, and North Sunset areas. They'll be going out, obviously, for a number of days, and they'll be reassessing the debris amounts and looking at how they can, not how they can perform better, but what they need to help them perform better because they're bringing in extra equipment, they're bringing heavier trucks, not just the standard, they'll have the standard garbage trucks going through and picking up the regular trash, but heavier equipment to deal with the storm debris. This is a warning or an announcement, I guess, that our police are actively patrolling the damaged areas, and for folks that, for any of us, that are just interested in satisfying idle curiosity and visiting the area, you'll likely make contact with a police officer if you're doing that. They'll be asking why you're in the area and what they can do to help you get out of the area. So, I would encourage our listening and watching audience to help these citizens who have been harmed and are in the process of literally picking up the pieces by avoiding those areas of the city. I commend all of the public safety officers, the public works officers, our fire management office, done yeoman's work so far. I thank Progressive Waste for responding very quickly this morning and have committed to help us and get through this as quickly as possible. So, it will get done, and we'll be back to normal as quickly as possible. So, I ask for folks patience and understanding, and we'll get it done.
Thank you, Roger. Ms. Whitaker, would you like to give your report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is nice to be here one more time. For the report, I don't know if you all got a copy of it or not, but I'll just briefly read some of the highlights on this. The goals, of course, for the Historical Society remain the same as always. We've completed some of the projects that were on our agenda and have added some new ones. This year, two Girl Scouts, and I think I mentioned this last year, who were working on projects to earn their Gold Star awards, they completed those. And one has been a traveling decapaged table that she made with pictures, historical pictures on it, and she's had those throughout the town. And one of the girls, excuse me, devised a program, working with the high school students, her peers, to make docents available to open the Perry House. And they did a great job. She had them scheduled, she knew who was going to be there and when, and it worked out great. They also did a little house cleaning while they were waiting for people to come visit. So, that also helped me a lot. We had got a lot of repairs done that were needed to be done. The brick walk that goes up to the museum from the street was in bad disrepair, was very dangerous, actually. That's been completed, and it looks really good. We have lights, LED lights put into the museums, both of, not both of them, of the Brown Museum, in the artifact room and in the academy room. That helps preserve what they did. It preserves the artifacts and things that are there where other lights damaged them over time. So, that's been done. We've replaced and repaired some of the siding on the Perry House. We were having rain falling through some of the walls, destroying some of the wallpaper. And then, we are going to have an irrigation system put into the Brown Museum grounds, such as is at the Perry House, that helps maintain the grounds. And since they are used, even when we're not there and we don't have it open, we have people taking pictures, people coming, have picnics on the porch. And we also had, this early fall, a couple who were raised here in Friendswood, and they have had their 30th wedding anniversary. They were married, at the time, there was a gazebo at the Brown Museum, and they were married in that gazebo 30 years ago. So, that was pretty interesting. They did not go into the museum, but they used the grounds, and they said it was really They're used for a lot of events. We have photographers taking engagement pictures and family pictures for particular holidays and that kind of thing. So, they're used whether we are there or not. There's no charge for any of this. We have pictures, recently, got the pictures of Frank Brown and Mary Jane Brown pulled out from underneath the bed where they were being hidden for some unknown reason. I don't know what. We took them to the frame shop, and they cleaned those up. We also have a family photo, and it was just a plain black and white picture mounted on a piece of construction paper. So, we've taken that down, and it's been framed. And it seemed like there was another one we did. Anyway, these pictures have been framed and repaired. We did not disturb any of the glass or anything of that nature, but we had brass plates put on them so they're identifiable. So, what they have, it would be a collage on one of the walls in the parlor of Frank Brown and his parents. And then, we have the family photo, and then, we have a picture of the Allens, which is Mary Jane's parents. So, that should be interesting when people come to see. We had our fifth annual history, just finished it Friday, just before the rain, or whatever it was that went through here. I'll go ahead and just give you a few notes of what happened there. We went through, we had about 200 people go through the gate, and we ran this one day in, before, we'd only done it, we'd done it for two days. But we did this for one day. Came in with four... Came in with four thousand and, I think, eight-hundred and forty dollars or something like that. We don't keep any of that money except to get us started for the next year. So four thousand of that dollars is going to go back to the students who worked in, like, the Student Council, MIRAC Club, the BWA Club, and helped, they were the ones, they did the, what is it, Spook House. Creativity, creativity was on a high. I think, Steve, help me out here, what did they do, what did they portray this year? They had a theme this year. Before, it had just been screaming and rattling chains and running chainsaws.
It was a haunted hotel.
Yes, a haunted hotel. They had a depiction of this. So, but there was still a lot of screaming. Some of those kids can scream really loud. So we have, going to give the four thousand dollars back to the students and their peers who participated and put this on, they worked as guides throughout the evening. They maintained, tried to maintain a little decorum in the lines while they were waiting. Never, never try that again, it doesn't work. But we feel really good about that, knowing that there's a lot of work ahead of that. And then they had to go back and clean up. Did they ever get that done? So we have a bunch of good kids, we hope that they will maybe help maintain and keep the historic, the history of this town in act. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ann. Moves us on to item thirteen. Discussion and possible action regarding early termination of a contract with Bay Area-Houston Economic Partnership from Economic Development Services. It was previously tabled. Do I hear a motion to remove it from the table?
I'll make the motion to remove it from the table.
Hold on a second.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Removing it from the table, so we can discuss it. We tabled it at our last meeting. So all those in favor of removing it from the table so we can discuss it? One, two, three, four. Okay. All those opposed? One, two.
Point of information, when we tabled, it was an item open for discussion, it wasn't under an item of terminating the contract. It was discussing, I forget the wording of it, but it wasn't worded this way, that's why I'm hesitant on how to vote for this.
The item thirteen is the same item that was on last month's agenda. Item fourteen is the, is the new one.
It's a new one. With the stuff that they said they would do, that we were discussing last week.
So it was up for, my recollection is it was up for action by council.
I just don't remember the early termination of the contract being in the verbiage of the last agenda.
Well, we got a majority to discuss it. Yeah, to remove it from the table. So, do I have a, let me clarify this, too. Since it says termination, item fourteen is there regarding consideration amendments to their existing contract. So we would have to, to accept item fourteen, we'd have to turn down item thirteen? Am I correct?
In order for there to be action on item fourteen, item thirteen would have to fail.
So we've got it off the table, we've untabled it. Are you happy with?
That's right.
Okay. Who would like to?
You'll now need a motion to either approve or deny this action.
I'll make a motion that we deny this, so we can talk about fourteen.
Seconding.
Any, since I did it, I like the terms of the contract in item fourteen better than I do the item thirteen. So that's my reason for it. Whichever one of you tied down there on the second.
Just so I'm clear, this motion is, we have to vote no to move on to the next one. If you vote, if this motion passes, then the contract is rescinded, and we have no motion fourteen, correct?
No, that's incorrect. The mayor's, the mayor's motion was to deny the approval of this action.
That's not the motion on the agenda.
That's not the motion on the agenda, that's not the agenda.
Right. The action, the item before you is to consider early termination of the existing contract. The mayor has moved that not take place, is that correct? And that's been seconded.
That's what I said, yeah, what he said. I'd like to move on to item fourteen.
I would like to discuss this.
I understand, I'm just clarifying why I made my motion the way. Go ahead, who had the second over here?
I'm fine, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, thank you.
When we get to vote on this, I just need to make sure.
Councilmember Hill?
You know, this is not about the money, this is about results. The recent development we see in Friendswood now is from Friendswood people. It's nobody Bay Area brought here, it's nobody Karen brought here. It's people that grew up in Friendswood, reinvested into this community. We just, ZBOA just approved various, for this old building on Whispering Pine, it's been vacant for fifteen years. I think it'll be turned around very similar to what we saw on Roberts Auto Supply. It'll be a nice building and be brought back to life and put on the tax rolls. You know, my son is a builder. He has, he's forty-two years old, I'm pretty, these figures are going to be pretty accurate. He has put a hundred million dollars' worth of value on our city's tax rolls in his short life. And to do that, he has paid thousands and thousands of dollars in permit fees, impact fees, he's had to build bridges, you know, he's had to do a lot of things. But he's a Friendswood guy, that's what we do. I knew Deke Slate, and I know Chris Kraft, I knew Glenn Looney, all these guys were here before anybody heard of Bay Area Economic. They came to Friendswood because it's a great place to live. And all these people that you, I don't know if you paid them or want to come speak tonight, I'm sure they're your members, I respect their views, but I don't know if any of them pay anything other than real estate tax on their buildings or their homes. That's what we do in Friendswood, we have homes, and we do it better than anybody else. And matter of fact, most people in Friendswood don't want a lot of economic development. They don't want the traffic that Lake City and Pearland have, they don't want the debt that they have. We like Friendswood, we like to steadily grow it, and we grow it ourselves. And so I think to do this another seventeen years is a waste of money and time, and I think we can do it better ourselves. And I've heard a council member say at some meetings, it's very hard to stop any kind of government program. This is just another government program, when we substituted. And the next, I mean, we may want to grow it, I don't know, but I don't think a piece of paper signed tonight with a wish list is going to make any more results than it has in the last seventeen years.
Thank you.
Welcome.
To be clear, what we're discussing here is terminating the current contract early, and then we do that, we can then begin discussion on a new one.
That's correct.
Which is the next item, fourteen?
That's correct.
All right, I dig, the way I read it, if you terminate this, how can you, if you terminate this contract, how can you amend it?
If you, if you vote to terminate this contract, then there is no action on fourteen.
But this vote, the mayor mysteriously worded it to not terminate it. So there, again, if you vote for this, you terminate it. No, you don't terminate it.
Arnold?
Yes, sir.
Would you help, I'm trying to get this straight.
Yes, sir.
The reading is, discussion and possible action regarding early termination of a contract with Bay Area-Houston Economic Partnership for Economic Development Services. And I voted not to approve this.
Right, your motion is essentially a motion to deny this item, and it's been seconded. So if...
So if it, if my motion carries...
You'll move on to number fourteen.
There we go. Councilmember McGinnis?
Mayor, I concur with your reasoning to deny so that we could move on to item fourteen. And I would just say, the leadership at Bay Area Economic Partnership heard us loud and clear, heard the comments of Councilman Hill and others, and I think that they stepped up to say, okay, we have an opportunity to serve Friendswood better. I thought that was a good sign of their willingness and their leadership and their attentive attitude towards us. So I appreciate your words, Councilman Hill. As I said last month, I think the BEHAP agreement is a bigger picture than strictly economic development in Friendswood. And to support them in no way, shape, or form detracts from great businessmen in our community like your son. And I salute them just as well.
Billy, you want to go, and then I'll go, and then Carl?
Again, I'm just trying to get clarification. If we...
One vote yes to go to fourteen.
Let me ask the mayor, please. The, if we, if we support your motion, then we move on to fourteen. At that point, we're either taking this one or the other one.
Correct.
The only way we're not moving forward with BEHAP is if we vote against your motion.
Councilmember, Anna?
I appreciate you allowing us to table this last time, it's given me the opportunity to dig into this and to meet and discuss this item with a lot of folks. And I've heard a lot of pros for staying with BEHAP, and I've heard a lot of cons for going away from BEHAP. But the only reason I don't think it was worded this way, and it came apparent to me as I was researching this, when we first were talking about this, it was at the time of our budget. And I was under the impression that it was time for the contract to renew. But I didn't realize that in 2014, we approved this as a three-year contract. So in essence, it's not, we're not renewing it, but we are terminating the contract, and I didn't realize that when we were having these discussions last time. So I appreciate the opportunity to table, it's allowed me to make that realization. It's a seventeen-year relationship. When you have a seventeen relationship, your relationship, it's not going to be perfect. And there's going to be the ups, there's going to be downs. And when you look at the contract, you look at the long relationship, I don't think there's anything in there that's been done that would require terminating a contract that we've committed to. When you look at 2015, we've committed this as the year of the business, this is the year where we want to become more business-friendly. And you don't send that message by canceling a three-year contract when you're into it and you don't really have any grounds for violations of the contract. Now, thank goodness, BEHAP has listened to us, I think it's good we've had this discussion because there has been some things that happened that we weren't pleased with. They've listened to that, and out of their wish to maintain the relationships, they've brought some changes to the contract to try to amend things when they didn't have to when we're already into a three-year contract, so. For, and all those that have had negative things to say, but I appreciate that, and things, things do happen, and there are viewpoints, but I think you got to look at the big picture, and you got to take, you know, what's in the best interest for the citizens of Friendswood who we represent and going forward. And there's a lot of value in staying in a partnership that has this regional presence, that gives us the seat at a lot of tables, it gives us a voice at a lot of things. And there's a lot of things going on that I didn't even realize that BEHAP's doing, that other Friendswood entities such as FISD and CCISD that are involved with, that would potentially impact those relationships on how we vote here tonight. Thank you.
Who's next? Councilmember Rocky?
I'm sorry, but I just want to go through the logic of this vote here, just so I'm sure, okay? We have an option, no, no, bear with me, I have a degree in logic. On item thirteen...
You're absolutely kidding.
I do, I actually do. On item thirteen, if we say yes, the current contract is, at least for a few brief minutes, still in place. If we say no, the current contract is gone and we're done talking, okay? If we do vote yes, then we go on to item fourteen, and if we end up voting no on item fourteen, then we're staying with the current contract. If we end up voting yes on item fourteen, then we have new amendments to the contract. Phew, thank you.
Here's a college.
Carl?
I think it's important to point out what this is. This is an old legacy contract, date does, dates back seventeen years. So it's been renewed, I guess, like, five times. And one thing I neglected to do before I came here tonight was to compare the original contract to what we have today, but I suspect there have been very, very few changes made to it. From what I can tell, what they really are, more than an economic development organization, is a lobbying organization for the aerospace business. And that's fine, there's nothing wrong with that. And I want to be very, very clear to everybody in the audience, I am not anti-NASA. I grew up in a NASA home, I spent Apollo 13 in my father's office in Hampton, Virginia. I'm a big NASA fan. However, that said, I don't know that we, as a city, should be in the business of funding lobbying groups. If we do this and continue to do this, if somebody from the American Petroleum Institute or the American Chemical Society rolls in here and asks it for twenty thousand dollars a year, why are we not obligated to give it to them, too? Or the American Medical Association, or the, you know, the Texas Bar, or any other industry group that might come in here looking for? I, you know, obviously, the aerospace business is very, very important to our community, but I think it's really those that profit from that that should be footing this bill and not us. I think this is a lot less about money than it is about, at least for BEHAP, than it is that it's, it's a brick falls off the wall. And if one goes, then another may follow, and I think that's really what their big concern is, less so than they've got all this great work in the queue for Friendswood that's getting ready to hit. You know, I've seen this amended contract that's proposed as well, and I suppose we'll, you know, discuss that in a little bit if we do, but, you know. I'm really wrestling, I've been, I've wrestled with it for quite some time, I'm wrestling with it right now, with it to go into some further discussion, but it's supposed to be a partnership, and it's not really felt like one, particularly in the last few weeks. Been very hostile overtures from the organization, and that's towards Councilman Mayor. And I just can only begin to suspect how they treat staff if they treat us that way, our members of this council. So I'm, I'm not going to vote to renew this or to carry on with it. I just, I don't, I don't see where there's any benefit to us. We're looking at an opportunity here to save substantial amount of money if we can come up with another hundred thousand dollars a year so that we don't impact our tax rate. Well, there's just about a fifth of it right there. We've got new softball fields that we're putting in, and we don't have the ability to put shade over the bleachers, but we're going to spend money on this. So I, I'm not going to be able to do it. I'm only one vote. I respect the opinions of the others up here, but stated my case.
This is my turn. I didn't like how the discussion started out, but I am pleased with the changes that I saw in their contract and the people. Now, I kind of thought the money could be used elsewhere, looked into it, and said, what was the return on the investment? I say we get down to item fourteen, let them prove themselves... prove themselves for a year, since they have stepped up to the plate and done the things that we asked them to do. And if there's no return then, I won't feel bad about terminating. So I will be wanting to get to fourteen and supporting fourteen for those reasons. Councilman Hill?
Couple of minutes ago, I told the council the meaning of insanity. I hope they haven't forgot it.
Understood. Is that it? We're done? Okay, so a yes vote moves us on to fourteen.
A yes vote keeps your current contract in place and allows you to consider amendments to it in item number fourteen.
All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed? Two. Fourteen, discussion of possible action regarding approving a contract with Friendswood. Whoops. Fourteen, discussion of possible action regarding consideration, considering amendments to the existing agreement with Bay Area Houston Economic Partnership for Economic Development Services. Do I hear your motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion? Councilmember Rocky?
Can we ask somebody? I have a question.
Okay. Dan?
I like, I like that you guys put forth some honest effort, I thought, to clarify things. In the amendments, you talk about bringing some number of leads to Friendswood, okay? And I want to know how, how that's going to work. And are these going to be leads that we get first? Or are these going to be leads that are called to meet Friendswood's specific needs? And are these going to be leads that we wouldn't have gotten anyway by the normal course of events? But I'd just like to hear your opinion on how you're going. Because, because if we pass it, we're going to be looking at this particular passage in detail in a year and saying, did you guys actually produce what you said you were going to produce? So I'd like to hear you define that pretty clearly for us.
Okay. Let's go in reverse order. First of all, these would, these would be fresh, new leads. They would not be leads that you guys would be receiving otherwise. Secondly, these would be leads that would be, I guess, for lack of a better term, these would be leads that would be, would be a good fit for Friendswood. These would be companies that would fit with the current business model. It would be companies that would fit with, with the zoning, companies that would be a good fit for, for Friendswood. On the last item, councilmember, again, we're a regional organization. We can't make these exclusive leads. So these would be leads, if they fit another city, then the other city would get those leads as well. And again, if you can just understand, if we began divvying up leads to all of the cities in different ways, we'd become a referee. We'd become an umpire. We, in essence, are trying to do the job that the company needs to do in figuring out where is it that they want to go. It would quickly destroy the fabric of this regional organization if we began sending certain leads solely and only to Dickinson and sending other leads solely and exclusively to LaPorte or to Seabrook or to Friendswood. So I hope that answers three questions.
Can I just, can I clarify the very first comment, though? And if, I think I understood you right, that one of the questions you asked was, would you receive these leads otherwise? We don't know the answer to that question. When we receive these leads, whether it comes from the state, a developer, a company that's just, that's heard about a consultant that comes, comes to see us, most of the time, we don't know if you hear about that lead or not. But if it's a fit based on the parameters that you've given us as a city, then we're going to send them to you. We don't call and say, have you got this yet? But if it's a lead that comes from a consultant, a developer, or a company that wants to expand, and we, and it fits the parameters that the city of Friendswood has given us to work with, we'll send it to you.
Councilmember Gustafson?
So if I might ask, Mr. Mitchell, that's exactly what you're doing right now, correct?
That's correct. Which, but let me finish the answer. Over the last twenty-four months, we've sent thirty-one leads to the city of Friendswood.
Thank you.
Mayor. Councilmember Hill?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Does that count as my turn?
One turn.
It's one.
Okay, I wouldn't.
You weren't done yet. Continue.
No, no, no. I just wanted to point out, this new contract only requires them to provide seven leads. There's no definition of what qualifies as a lead. And to be quite frank with you and everybody in this room, I could generate seven leads if I started at eight in the morning and got finished by lunch. I'm positive I could generate seven leads. And we're asking to do that over the course of a year. So I, you know, I appreciate the fact that you guys are trying to tailor this a little more towards what our needs are. I'd like to see something more substantive, something more substantial than that. I'd like to point out again, one, one item in here that caught my attention with, it's more in the cover letter. I don't know if that, I guess that doesn't really apply to the contract, but provider will support the owners of the Wickham property by working with commercial brokers and developers to bring quality development to the site. A little concerned that, you know, maybe a conflict of interest there. And again, throughout the document, it's just, it's NASA, 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 NASA. And I understand that. And I understand, well, okay, here we go. It is in here. Paragraph M, provider will support the owners of the Wickham property by working with the commercial developers and brokers to bring quality development to the site. I'll leave it where it is. I can fight that. All right. I, I just, there's not any substantial, substantial difference between the two contracts that I can see, just three items at the end. Item L, providing support to the vision to downtown Friendswood by enhancing the economic viability promotion, marketing, and fostering partnerships and acting as an advocate for downtown Friendswood. I don't know if that's intended to support local group of businessmen or whether that's just something strictly, a concentrated effort on the downtown area as opposed to 528 or 2351. I'm wondering if you could elaborate on that a little bit.
It's a result, councilmember, of the last discussion that we had and the interest in the council in supporting what was going on in downtown Friendswood and the support for the Friends of Downtown Friendswood Association. That was the origination of that. Since the last meeting, we've had a chance to attend one of the meetings of the Friends of Downtown Friendswood Association. It was a tremendous meeting. There's a lot of energy in that room. Subsequently, we've joined that organization, and we're now members of the Friends of Downtown Friendswood Association. So that was the genesis of that particular amendment.
All right. So I mean, I guess if I get to, the commitment that they're making is they have to provide us seven leads, which they could probably do easily by lunchtime tomorrow for the, for the entire year. I'd like to see something more substantial.
I've got it.
Councilmember Scott, then councilmember Hill, or you want Hill to go first, Scott?
I can go first.
Okay.
Well, again, I, you know, it's, it's more about a area viability. And I think a lot of what they do outside of the city of Friendswood employs citizens who live in Friendswood. It benefits business owners who live in Friendswood. It benefits dental clinics. It benefits everything. So it's more of a regional deal. And I applaud you for not coming out and saying, oh, yeah, the first ten leads we get every day, we're going to send right to you. I think part of, you know, being in business, the, the part of it is competition. So I think that, you know, that we have a responsibility to provide to them the things that we're looking for. They have a responsibility to feed back to us and everybody else in the region, that these are, that this is a client that meets what you're looking for. And then it's the responsibility of the city of Friendswood, the Economic Development Group, Planning and Zoning, and everybody else to pull together and make Friendswood the place that that business owner is attracted to. It's not BayHEP's responsibility to fit a square peg in a round hole. It's BayHEP's responsibility to say that you have a round hole, and here's a candidate. We have the responsibility to fill it. Our economic development team, our city staff, Planning and Zoning, and us up here on council have an opportunity or the responsibility to take that candidate and make them understand that Friendswood is the best place for that business. But I think the viability of the Bay Area region has, has been hugely beneficial in economic development as a region over the last decade or two. And I know that I wouldn't be in the position that I'm in were it not for the economic boon of this region. Now, I understand also that BayHEP doesn't, isn't like the major player that gets a lot of this industry going. But they are a link for a isolated community to the acknowledgement, I think, of Councilman Hill and certainly myself, a community that doesn't want a lot of economic growth. They don't want a lot of economic, they don't want a lot of big businesses. And as I said at the last meeting, if you want to find out, throw something up downtown or out on 528 and watch them fill the halls and complaints about it. But the benefit is, is that they do grow the region, and they do help the region, and that benefits all of us who do live here and reside here because we benefit from that indirectly. That's my comment.
Councilmember Hill?
Mayor, I'd like to offer an amendment to this contract. And that's that, in addition to the seven leads, they bring one business to Friendswood next year that will stick. Boring unless the PNC or somebody. I'd just like to see you bring one in seventeen years that actually sticks. If the council has this much faith in these guys, then you will vote to amend this contract where they can bring one business to Friendswood this year.
So are you making an amendment?
I'm making an amendment to the, to the contract, yeah.
To the motion?
I don't even know what the motion is to, well, it's to.
To approve the.
To approve the amendments. I just want to add one to it.
On that motion and a vote whether or not to adopt that amendment?
I'd like to make, make a motion that we amend the contract to include Bay Area Economic Partnership will bring one business to Friendswood in the coming year.
Second.
Did you second it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So now we can discuss it.
Any discussion? Councilmember McGinnis?
Mayor, Councilman Hill, I appreciate that. But as I said last month, that's not the job of BayHEP. They are a regional economic development partnership. That job that you say more properly belongs with our Economic Development Corporation, our Chamber of Commerce. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Well, councilmember Scott and Gustafson.
Yeah, well, I mean, I would echo Councilman McGinnis's sentiments. I mean, would we put that same responsibility on economic development?
I certainly would.
We didn't do it on the Chamber of Commerce whenever we approved the $20,000 for the chamber. We didn't demand that they bring one business. Look, I, and I said it again, this, this is a new amendment, so I get to talk twice. That's great. Look, I said it earlier, it's not their responsibility to put a business in Friendswood. It's their responsibility to send signals to people looking to put businesses in our region that Friendswood is a community that you should look at. But Friendswood's fighting with Seabrook and Webster and LaPorte and Dickinson and, and everybody else. When there is a customer looking, or a potential client looking to move a business into the Bay Area, you're competing with other communities. You are. Well, we're not, because we're not very competitive in that market.
He's got the floor.
We're not, because we're not very competitive in that market. We're, we're, we're offering waivers of fees that equal $20,000, right? I mean, and this could be a $2 million project. Other communities are offering legitimate, legitimate benefits, tax abatement, and all kinds of things like that to lure businesses in. So we're going to lose those every single time. And it's not BayHEP's fault. And again, I'm not pointing any fingers in any direction at all. I'm just saying that their responsibility is not to put a business here. We didn't put that same kind of constraint on, on the Chamber of Commerce when we approved their funding. We haven't put that same kind of constraint on our own economic development group. So I won't vote.
Can I speak one more time?
Yes, sir.
The basic purpose of the chamber is to keep and serve businesses that are already here. Their job is not to bring friends. Plus, they do tremendous things for the city, which Halloween in the park, the builders or whatever the golf term it is, which is probably a waste of money. But, you know, anyway, no, I would, I would like to, I'd like to put it on care and bring one business, make it stick, or close your office next door. I'd sure do that. Because I'm tired of throwing money in rat holes.
Councilmember Rocky?
You know, I am actually sympathetic to Jim, Councilman Hill's amendment. But, but the amendment is, it's written, it's sort of what, so what if, if they don't, okay? In other words, if we say, and you have to bring us one good, solid business into Friendswood within a year, or else, what? The or else is, what's going to happen automatically already? We are only talking about extending this a year with this new contract, and we're going to come back here in a year and look at this again. And if seven leads are not, I'm going to look for businesses being here, exactly, you know, to the, to Jim's concept here. I'm just, you know, whether we do that amendment or not, I don't think it really matters, because the, the reality is what Jim is saying is exactly what we're all going to be thinking in one year, okay? That we better see something here. We better see real leads and not the leads that are for businesses that we never would bring in here anyway. They need to be real leads. They need to be leads that fit into Friendswood. And at least one of them has to make it around the bases and touch home, okay? Or at least be in the process, you know, of being built or something. Absent that, I know how I'm going to vote in a year.
Arnold, do you have a finger on the button?
Just a quick clarification, Mayor and Council. This is a three-year contract, which is going into the second year of the three-year contract. So if you accept, you know, one or more of the amendments, that's not going to affect the term of the contract. It will still, without early termination, will still go through 2017.
Correct. Councilmember Scott? This is your second time.
Yeah, so what I would recommend to BayHEP is that council should see all the leads, right? Whether or not they stick is not your responsibility, right? If you provide thirty-one leads in twenty-four months or sixteen leads in twelve months, then we should be privy to that. We should see that. And then we should see or try to better understand why some of them aren't sticking. It's not your responsibility to make it stick, right? So I think, is that not fair? Right? I mean, if they give sixteen leads to, to city staff and not a single one of them picks up the ball, could there be something more at play other than we're just not getting the right leads? Exactly, exactly.
Councilmember Gustafson?
Let's make comments of surprise to some of you. But, and again, I echo Councilman Rocky's comments. I'm sympathetic to the amendment. However, it's not what they do, and they've even told us so much, that, you know, if they give us leads, it's going to be the same lead they give everyone else. He's going to be doing exactly what they've done for us for the past seventeen years. Not going to be any change in what they do. There's going to be some additional wording in the contract. And to be honest, I don't know that they could. It's, it's not what they're set up to do. They are a lobbying group for the aerospace industry. And they've branched off and done some medical stuff now, and perhaps a little bit of petrochemical. I'm not aware of that. But it's, it's, it's not what they do. If, and I think Councilman Scott is correct, if they. If they provide us with a lead, it's not up to them to close it. That's, that's our business. The problem is, I don't even think that that's really where we ought to be getting leads from. It's, and, and that's kind of to my point, that instead of, if, if we use a regional organization to assist us with economic development, we're just going to get the same thing that everybody else is getting. And I, one thing I'm concerned with is that when, when those of, those of us up here think of economic development, we're thinking of trying to stuff a Best Buy or some big box store in the middle of downtown, and that's, that's never what's going to come in there. What you're going to look at is stuff like one-off or, or real small type local chain restaurants or, you know, something that shut down in Houston because a bank bought the property and they've got to find somewhere to relocate to, or, or a place up in Houston that's very successful and, and, you know, sells out all the space they've got and has no room to grow, has to look out to the suburbs to go. You know, a men's clothing store or something that's not necessarily tied to a local chain. I, I don't know. It, it's not, you know, the, the big golf driving range that showed up in Webster is not going to show up in our downtown. It never would. And I don't, I just, you know, we're beyond the point of not doing something, so we're going to do something. But I guess what I would ask to do is, could we table the amendment for a month and allow us to come back with some proposed changes? Perhaps two of us or three of us can break off and, and come up with some ideas of what we would like to see. Because I, I think we're moving in the right direction, that we're trying to get something where we can measure and establish what the performance we're getting out of the contract is. Here's right now, the way it's currently written, everything's very, very general. That would, so I guess we'd need to...
I'd like to call a question.
Yeah.
Question's been called.
On the amendment?
Thank you.
On Jim's amendment.
Got to handle the, calling the question, right?
Yes, you'd need a supermajority vote on calling the question.
All those in favor of calling the question? Okay. All as opposed, so it has to be unanimous. Those in favor of the amendment by Mayor Pro Tem Hill and the second by the mayor? In favor, raise your hand. One, two, three. Opposed, one, two, three, four. So that fails. Now we're back to the original motion.
Agenda item, to approve the original agenda item, number 14.
Item 14.
Can we?
We've already discussed it, we're moving on, right? Now we got to vote. All those in favor?
We have to close the discussion.
Vote to amend the contract.
I, I haven't, I've only, I think I spoke once on this issue. I spoke, I only spoke once on the question. I still have a turn.
Okay.
Again, I, back to what I said before, I'd like to propose, you know, if, if they're generally interested in rewriting the contract to something that better, is better tailored to what we need, I'd be open to doing that. But, you know, these three items here, again, they're, they're very general, difficult to measure, and I think, unfortunately, I'm afraid they're setting themselves up for failure. Again, can we?
You got to make the motion to postpone.
I'd make a motion to postpone so that we can counter the contract.
Councilmember, is that a motion to postpone to a specific meeting date? Or is this to table it to the next?
Yeah.
There's a distinction between the two. A motion to postpone is a debatable motion. A motion to table is not debatable. So again, for clarification, are you motioning?
Motion to table until next month.
Motion fails. Motion fails. No second. Now we're on to, back to the original. Councilmember McGinnis?
Mayor, I appreciate all the discussion tonight on this. I think the leaders of BayHEP are here and they have heard our concerns loudly and clearly. I think they are also aware that somewhere along the lines, there must have been some interpersonal, whether it was insults or down-talking or whatever. So I think there may be some fences to mend on personal levels. I'm going to support this revised contract. I think we've, I've expressed my support and your role in this region, that it's valuable, but going forward, you may have to mend some fences as well as, you know, do your darndest with our Economic Development Group and our Chamber of Commerce and do your best to show us some results by the next year. I appreciate that you came back tonight with an amended contract. It shows that you're listening to us and that you want this partnership to continue. I would encourage my colleagues on the council to see that as well and to vote in the affirmative for this partnership to continue. Thank you, Mayor.
Questions been called. All those in favor of the question? All those opposed? All those in favor of the amended contract? All those opposed? So it has to be five, two. Thank you, gentlemen. Consideration possible action regarding approving a contract with Friendswood Historical Society and the amount of $15,000 for the maintenance and preservation of historical sites in the city and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, so it has to be unanimous. Where am I at? Sixteen. Discussion and possible action regarding amendment to the appointment policy for boards, committees, and commissions, combining the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with Keep Friendswood Beautiful. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, so it has to be unanimous. Discussion and possible action regarding approving appointments to Keep Friendswood Beautiful, appointing members of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to Keep Friendswood Beautiful. Do I hear a motion?
I still approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, so it has to be unanimous. Dang it. I'm sorry. I scrolled the wrong way. Here we go. Discussion and possible action regarding appointing Mona Palmer as an alternate member to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee and moving Nancy Mastrow-Francesco from alternate member to regular member to fill a vacated position. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Resolution, 2015-24 resolution, the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris County, casting 129 votes for electing person to the Galveston Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2016-2017. It'd be Scott Brast. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed?
I thought we were voting for you on that one.
Yeah. Thank you for not voting for me. Resolution, 2015-25, a resolution, the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas, Galveston, Harris County, is casting its ballot for the election of a person of Board of Directors of the Harris County Appraisal District for 2016-17, Ed Heathcott. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? So it has to be unanimous. Ordinance, 2015-26, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification of 402 East Edgewood Drive being a part of Lot 21 of the Hoydo Kaufman subdivision, abstract 20, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas, by granting an amendment to ordinance number 2001. And ordinance 2013-13 permitting, permitting specific use permit, SUP by adding NAICS use 442 furniture and home furnishings, NAICS use 446 health and, and personal care stores, and NAICS use 448 clothing and clothing accessory stores, but otherwise subject to the prior regulations, restrictions, and conditions of ordinance number 953 establishing the planned unit development for the use of the subject property. Do I hear a motion?
I still approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? B, ordinance number T, 2015-29, first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix B, Section 4 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Friendswood. This is a combination of K, Keep Friendswood Beautiful and Parks and Rec. Do I hear a motion?
I still approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Do we have a?
Unanimously recommended in favor.
Okay. C, P&amp;Z unanimously recommends this. Ordinance T, 2015-30, first reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification for 1100 to 1110 South Friendswood Drive being a tract or parcel containing 3.665 acres known as Lot 1, Block 1 of the final plot of Cowards Creek Office Park situated in Sarah McKissick League Abstract Number 151, Galveston County, Texas, Friendswood, Texas, by granting an amendment of ordinance number 2001-05, granting a zone classification change from Office Park District to planned unit development and permitting specific use permit, SUP by adding NAICS use 8121, personal care services, NAICS use 8129, other personal services, NAICS use 8139, business, professional, labor, political, and similar organizations, assigning NAICS use number to the uses allowed pursuant to ordinance number 2001-05, but otherwise subject to the prior regulations, restrictions, and conditions of ordinance number 2001-05 establishing the planned unit development for the use of the subject property. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Unanimous. Ordinance T, 1531, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting Budget Amendment 1 to the original budget for the fiscal year 2015-16 to provide for supplemental appropriation and/or transfer of certain funds.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed?
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Yes.
On these, and I know these guys may have an answer here, on all these ordinance where you have to read this long involving, is that actually necessary?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is.
Staff will be addressing this to shorten the required reading portion.
Good. Communication from the mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember McGinnis?
Mayor, since the last meeting, I had the opportunity to meet with Boy Scout Troop 442 and to teach them about city government and civics, and I just want to give a shout out to those scouts, the troop leaders, and to their parents. I invited them all to come to our next city council meeting. I'm surprised none of them showed up, but it's really refreshing to see, you know, those young scouts just so excited for 10 minutes or so about city government, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate, I think we heard some of it today, but the police force's work during the storm is, is just phenomenal. And, you know, my street was one of the ones that got hit, and today, when I go home, there's, you know, there's an off-duty police officer standing at the entrance to my street, checking to make sure whoever's going down there has a reason to be down there. So again, hats off to the Police Department. They do a tremendous job all the time, don't always get recognized for it. And I would just like to personally say thank you to the Police Department, Fire Department, EMS, for all that they do for our community. So thanks.
Councilmember Gustafson?
A comment on the storms that hit Saturday. Thoughts and prayers are with the families that were impacted. Been through a fire once in a house, and it's a pretty unpleasant experience. I can't imagine having the whole back of your house ripped off or the roof taken off. So anyway, I want everybody to know that those of you that were hit with the damage, you know, your honor, thoughts and prayers. Was fortunate enough to participate in the Hysterine event on Friday night for a second year in a row, and was able to provide four warm bodies to assist beyond myself. We, family had a great time at the event and happy to hear that it was successful as it was, in spite of the pending weather. I think we shut it down, the minute we shut it down, the raindrops hit, so. We roll into the holiday season here. Everybody stay safe and want to see you back here next month.
Councilmember Hill? I've said all I need to say tonight. Councilmember Eunice?
So I wanted to shout out to Texas New Mexico Power Company. We had a, a power pole and several power lines go down and across the street of Lundie Lane, and within eight hours, they were out there, had the poles put back up and power restored to that area. So appreciate the efforts of those folks coming out and taking care of that. Roger, one of the things I'd like you to look into for us, if you don't mind, is I never heard any of the alarms go off during any of this, and I've talked to other folks and they didn't hear any alarms either. So a little bit about the alarm system and how that works and what sounds it and what...
Be happy to talk about that. Just as a reminder, they're primarily, were put in place for pipeline explosions and actually were paid for six of the seven or seven of the eight with Exxon Pipeline money. There was a consideration about whether to sound them, and the decision was made that when they sound, people have to know what to do. They tend to call 911, which aggravates an overly, a problem that's already happened there as far as staffing. We only have a couple of dispatchers in at that point in time, not planning for a tornado. They also are there to, if you hear them, to shelter in place, so let me say that publicly. So whether it's a pipeline explosion, whatever else, that's, that's what's supposed to happen. And then pay attention to whether it's a, a radio station or social media or television, not to go outside and look around and see, and that's what happens. People will poke their head outside. So it was a, it was a decision made that it was time of early morning. Many have said here that they slept through it until people started texting them, asking if they were okay. They were doing what they needed to be doing, being indoors. So they are there, they're not a tornado warning system as you think about in North Texas or Hurricane Alley or Tornado Alley in Oklahoma. So I appreciate you, you asking that question. And it gives me the opportunity to say the most important statistic that I didn't read a while ago, and that is there were no injuries in this event. So that's a blessing and that's the most important thing. So thank you.
Councilmember Rocky?
Well, I want to thank Carl for participating. He played one of the three dead husbands of Alma Smith and did a great job. But, but he wanted a pay raise when it was done, and I told him, you know, the dead don't have labor rights. I'll do, I will tell a funny story. One of the people portrayed in the cemetery was Emma Stevenson, who apparently was quite eccentric and was the Friendswood poet and a very charming character in the day. And we had a great lady playing the part, and she, I was in this group that had a bunch of junior high girls, and, and the woman playing Emma Smith says that she was considered eccentric because she dressed funny. And then she looks at some of these junior high girls who have these very flamboyant-looking yoga pants on, and she goes, "Well, I can see," she points to one girl and says, "I can see you're, you're eccentric too." And this other girl, this girl, her friends leans over and goes, "You just got roasted by a ghost." So we had a lot of fun. People learned a lot about the history. We had a, probably our most successful one. We avoided the rain miraculously and, and so, and I too want to say, I got five messages on my phone, those, those emergency alerts, you know, about every 10 minutes. So, so that's a, probably a decent substitute, but thank you.
I'd like to thank our police and volunteer fire department and EMS. I took a tour around on my own and...
I took a tour around on my own, and I was very impressed. And yesterday, I took a tour around with the Friendswood Limousine with Murad and Mr. Hill, and I saw marked improvement, and I'm sure we're going to see it every day. A lot of the damage was by where I used to live in Friendswood, and going by there now, it's, the cul-de-sacs look much better. And then November 11th is Armistice Day or Veterans Day. Please thank your veterans. And that's all I've got to say. Move on to the consent agenda.
Most approved.
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Show up to be unanimous, we're adjourned.